Good afternoon, everybody. Welcome to the December 13th meeting of the Charles County Board of Education. Can we start off, please, by rising and singing the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you very much. We will begin with an update from the superintendent.
Good afternoon, Chairperson Lucas, Vice Chairperson Wilson, board members, staff, and all of those of you who are watching us today at home. Today, I bring final remarks to the 17th Elected Board of Education of Charles County Public Schools. At the conclusion of today's meeting, five of you move on from your role as board members. A year and a half ago, I was honored that you chose me to lead this vibrant school system and have supported and worked alongside me to continuously improve the educational opportunities for every student. To Ms. Abel, Ms. Battle Lockhart, Ms. Brown, Ms. McGraw, and Ms. Wilson, I thank each of you for the time you have dedicated to the education of children and for being fierce women leaders in our community, always advocating and supporting our youth. It has indeed been a pleasure to have gotten to know you individually, and I will miss working with each of you. Please know you're always welcome in Charles County Public Schools. No matter how many terms you serve this board, know that I speak for all my colleagues in CCPS when I say that we appreciate your commitment and focus on always doing what is in the best interest of all of our students and staff. On behalf of Charles County Public Schools, I wish you well in your endeavors and thank you all for everything you have done. For those of you here, can we please take a moment to thank our outgoing board members with an applause? Thank you. Thank you. I also look forward to continuing my work with Mr. Lucas and Mr. Hancock and the seven new members who will be sworn in next week. Please note that next Monday, December 19th, Board of Education 18 will be sworn into office. The ceremony is set for 6:00 PM at St. Charles High School in Waldorf. We welcome seven new members, with Mr. Hancock and Mr. Lucas continuing on the board. The ceremony will stream live on the school system website. Our new members are Ms. Dottery Butler Washington, Ms. Cindy Culver, Ms. Nicole Kramer, Ms. Janelle Moore Lee, Ms. Jamila Smith, Ms. Brenda Thomas, and Ms. Linda Warner, who, by the way, most of them are here today as well, so welcome. Oh, they are here in our audience today, I'm sorry. I already wrote that. And will participate in their first official meeting as board members on January 10th. Please join us either in person or online to watch this important ceremony on December 19th. As December quickly continues, Charles County Public Schools has transitioned to its winter sports and extracurricular activity season. I was able to catch the incredible performance of Chicken and Biscuits on Saturday night at St. Charles High School, and I am looking forward to attending musical performances as well as basketball, swimming, wrestling meets, and so many other activities happening this season in our schools. And I hope to see a lot of our community out supporting our youth. I also want to share a bit of background information about students who were eligible to participate in sports and extracurricular activities at the end of first quarter. As you may recall, this board changed the eligibility policy earlier this year. One change impacted incoming high school freshmen. They are now eligible to participate in activities through the end of the first semester as opposed to only the first quarter. As a result of this decision and this change, there were 822 more ninth graders who were eligible to participate in activities who would have been ineligible under the previous policy. As an example, last year, under the old policy, 145 ninth graders who were participating in athletic fall activities became ineligible after the first marking period. This year, incoming ninth graders can participate until the end of the first semester. In making this change to policy, the board expanded the length of time that we can use extracurricular activities as our hook to get students on the right track to a successful start of their high school years. While the board took this action, I also want to be very clear that it is now our collective responsibility as staff, starting with the superintendent and central office, but also including principals, teachers, coaches, counselors, to maximize this opportunity and to work with our students and families to increase the eligibility of every student to partake in activities and sports that expand their overall development. Later this week, I will spend my evening with hundreds of high school students enrolled in our Junior Reserve Officers Training Corp at the Colonel Donald M. Wade Military Ball. The school system has not been able to host the Military Ball since 2019, and I am indeed excited to attend my first one as superintendent. Many of you on this board worked with former board member Colonel Donald Wade, of whom the Military Ball is named for. Colonel Wade spent his time as a board member seeking to expand access and opportunities for all students, and I am very much looking forward to attending. In case you missed it, our high school students recently competed in our local ITZ Academic Program. It is indeed one of my favorite activities. On November 30th, student teams from each of our seven high schools met to tackle an all-time favorite quiz ball event. The team from McDonough, for the second consecutive year, took first place in the county challenge. The Rams will compete against Sidwell Friends and South Lakes High School during a show that will air on April 29th on WIDA, public television. North Point High School came in second place and will compete against two other Maryland high schools in a televised competition set to be recorded in early fall 2023. Congratulations to all of our students who participated and also their coaches. I would like to commend Charles County Public School staff for spending much of November and into December supporting the community through food drives and meal deliveries to families in need. Next week, our principals are creating meal baskets to deliver to identified families in need of extra support this holiday season. I am thankful to be part of an organization that values kindness and giving back, not only during the holidays, but each day of the school year. And finally, as a reminder, Charles County Public Schools is closed for its winter break from December 23rd through January 2nd. I hope our board members, teachers, students, and families, and staff, and our community members enjoy the long break. Thank you for your support, and I wish you a joyful holiday season. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Dr. Navarro. Now, it's time for board correspondence.
I knew you were looking right. Well, I would have to say that month of November to December certainly hasn't let up on activities. It was very nice to attend the opening of the Judy Center at Indian Head Elementary School along with some of my fellow board members, as well as attending the Turner Dedication. And that was especially nice to hear the principal talk about the fact that he had gone to that school as an elementary school student and how nice it was now to see him back as a principal. I wanted to commend our student liaison for the fine Student Town Hall that we attended, and I thought you did a wonderful job with the questioning and also coordinating the whole event. And I also attended ITZ Academic, and ITZ Academic this year was especially poignant for me because one of my former Wade students, Julie Perillo, was on the team last year and again this year, and they won. And so I was very, very proud of all the students, but especially proud of Judy, Julie. And I had two last MAB activities that I attended. One is the MAB Retreat. Then, at that MAB Retreat, we planned for the, we set the strategic plan for the entire coming year, and I know that some of the new board members have attended the MAB Board Orientation, and I would just like to say, highly suggest that you take advantage of all the resources that they have available to you, because it'll help you with your understanding of your role here on the board. And last but not least, my last MAB activity will be tomorrow. I was a member of the Equity Committee that developed the Equity Workbook, and we are now finalizing the Facilitators Guide for its use. And I know that there'll be lots of opportunities to infuse equity throughout our programming in the coming months, so I hope that you will take advantage of using the workbook. And if you don't have a copy of it, we know how to get you copies. So, that's it.
Thanks, Ms. McGraw. Ms. Wilson.
Happy holidays, everyone. I too attended the Student Town Hall, and I would highly encourage that you continue to have those Town Halls. I think it's a great opportunity for the students to voice their concerns and issues. A lot of times, though, it gets very frustrating that at board meetings, we put out tons of information that sometimes does not get down to the students' level. So, it's an opportunity to kind of give them the spotlight and ask very relevant and important questions. And like many of my colleagues, we had the Legislative Breakfast. I bring that up because I want to applaud my, our chair for highlighting quite an accomplishment that oftentimes, we get asked the question about recruitment of minorities, and I think that is a huge accomplishment to acknowledge again and again and again. Correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Lucas, we are ranked third in the state of Maryland for minority recruitment behind Baltimore City and Prince George's County. And that is kudos to the Human Resource Department. Many of you have heard me say that I used to sit in the back of this boardroom member as the Education Chair of the Charles County branch of the NAACP, and absolutely, you can clearly see the differences of inclusion and minority achievement. We just now need to work on the pipeline issue across the state, and that's working with our universities and institutions of higher learning. The other thing, I attended the North Point Senior Portfolio Interviews. I always love doing that, and I certainly welcomed the opportunity, like I've done before when I was not on the board, to participate in these portfolios. And it's important to reemphasize, we're in the scholarship application process. Mrs. McGraw, I'm sure you would love to talk more about the Charles County Scholarship Foundation and to make sure that our students, so we can reap the rewards during graduation, when our students, high school graduates, talk about the millions of dollars that they were able to obtain, but the work is happening now to make sure you put in those applications. I think the deadline for FASA is February 9th, so please, students, get out there and do that so that graduation time, we can hear about all the scholarships that have been awarded. As my colleague has already mentioned, ITZ Academic was excellent, very competitive, always seeing the hard work that our staff in terms of celebrating the opening of the Eva Turner School, the Judy Center in Indian Head. And then, of course, I had an opportunity, I sat on the panel as Advisory Committee for CASE, which is Curriculum for Agriculture, Science, and Environment, which is a CTE pathway at McDonough High School. So, I look forward to continuing to work there. And just as a special side note to my fellow colleagues, because we will all become part of the same sorority of fraternity, I will not be a board member, but December 21st will be the CCAC Advisory Committee, Special Education Citizens Advisory Committee, and it will be held at the FB Gwynne Center at 6:30. It is virtual. There's many committees out there that you can support. I just happened to mention this one because it's kind of embedded during the Christmas holiday. Please do not forget about our special education students. And that's all that I have for...
Thank you very much, Ms. Wilson. Appreciate it. Mr. Hancock.
Thank you, Chairman. Just a few things, most of the things have already been said. The Legislative Breakfast was awesome. I would like to thank Chairman Lucas, Dr. Navarro, for putting that on. I'd like to also thank Chris Miller, who will be down here later. I thought she did a great job explaining, going in depth with the blueprint for Maryland with our local elected officials and explaining some of the positives and some of the challenges that come with the blueprint. I thought she did a great job. Amira, you did a great job with the Student Town Hall. That was really cool. It's nice to, very rare do we get to sit down and have a back-and-forth dialogue with anyone, so to actually have that back-and-forth dialogue in a professional setting with the students, that was really cool, and you should be very proud of yourself, and you represent your constituents very well. I really enjoyed that. I also had a chance to speak with the first graders at Matula Elementary School about volunteering and good citizenship, and I really, really enjoyed that. You know, we talk a lot about being role models and being there for our students, so it really meant a lot to me to be able to speak to a bunch of young students and just tell them how easy it is and how hard it is at the same time to volunteer and show good citizenship. But it was a lot of fun, and I want to thank all the staff at Matula and all the first graders there for welcoming me there. I had a good time. Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much, Mr. Hancock. Ms. Brown.
I also had an opportunity to attend the Judy Center Dedication, because I'm sure everyone knows how important it is for us to reach these kids while they're very young and get them on track. Also, the Turner Dedication and ITZ Academic, and I really did enjoy that. I was glad I was. It's a big difference between, you know, when looking at them on television and then actually seeing them in person. I thought that made a big difference for me. I also enjoyed the Town Hall, the Student Town Hall, and hope to be more engaged with students after I retire. I also had an opportunity to attend the Alpha's Wellness Center, which is their dedication. They're right on 925, and it's unfortunate that we really have to have it, but it's a good thing that we do have it, and it's a beautiful building, because we do have some problems in Charles County, and people do need help. So, that center is now available. I also visited Steadam, Robert Steadam Center, and James Crake. And Crake was the first school that I taught at when I first came to Charles County. And it's, when you, when you be in one building, you see how it's changed over those years, because when I was there, it was completely open space, and now it's beginning to be, it's closed in a little bit now. I also attended a meeting called Women United. Of course, our superintendent, Dr. Navarro, was the guest speaker. She did a great job. And that was a group of people from various groups from around the county, not only Charles, but St. Mary's and Calvert. So, it's been an enjoyable time. I mean, I hope you take advantage of some of the things that you can attend, because you really get an eye-opener when you do, you're able to go to different things in the county, and there's so many things to go to that are good things that are happening around the county where you see the kids performing. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Brown. Ms. Battle Lockhart.
Happy holidays to everyone. I don't have much different to share, other than what they shared already. I attended quite a few of the same events, but I can't stress enough how proud I am of Amira in her Student Town Hall, and I hope you continue to do so. This is a time where you need to continue to be consistent, lifting the student voices. So, I look forward to seeing the room, the numbers in the room grow and grow, grow more, so you all can be heard, because this is your lived experience, and we won't understand how to support you on your journey, and your fellow students on your journey, unless we hear what your needs are, instead of assuming what your needs are. So, now is your time to shine, so take advantage of it. You're starting off pretty well, so looking forward to be a part of that journey with you as well. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Battle Lockhart. Amira.
Okay. Hi, everyone. So, I would just like to start by talking about the Town Hall that we had on November 28th. I was so happy that you guys were able to participate. You guys gave some very insightful answers, and I know we posted the video on YouTube, and that got a lot of views, so hopefully, students were able to watch that and were able to benefit from that. Another thing I would like to add is I just want to update you guys on the BYOD work sessions that we've been having. So, this is where the students have been meeting from across the county to revise a new BYOD policy. So, we met again last week, and we were able to rewrite a new BYOD policy, which will be presented to Dr. Jones and other board staff sometime either this week or next week. So, I believe December 20th is the day we're doing that. And then, another thing I'd like to add is, for the past few months, I've been working with the Anarundel County Student Board Member to found an Advisory Council for the Maryland State Superintendent. So, we've already worked out the logistics of this Advisory Council, and we have a meeting with the State Superintendent later this month to talk with him about establishing it. So, that's pretty much all I have.
I wouldn't say pretty much. There's just some pretty high-level accomplishments. So, thank you very much. Appreciate that. Anything else? So, I just have a couple of things. I was at a lot of the same events with my fellow board members. I do want to highlight the Legislative Breakfast, and we had, you know, the commissioners and our folks from Annapolis there, many of whom were also at the Commissioner's swearing-in ceremony, which was last week. And it's important, moving forward, that we keep those lines of communication open. We have some pressing issues in the school system, and we need to make sure that all the entities are in alignment and that we're working together to do what's best for students. So, I just want to highlight that. I also want to say I had the privilege, a couple of nights ago, to attend an Eagle Scout Ceremony for Daniel Rule, and his Eagle Scout project was actually, took place at Malcolm Elementary School, where he put in kind of a garden and an area where people could relax and also take advantage of some opportunities to look at the natural surroundings there. And in doing that, he found some old artifacts from the school, which the principal was very happy about, and he polished them up, and they're on display there. But I just want to thank him for that, and also thank Senator Ellis's office. They had a representative there as well to give him a certificate. So, kudos to all the Eagle Scouts and all scouting, but the Eagle Scouts have done a lot in doing Eagle Scout projects for the school system, so I just wanted to highlight that. And to amplify what Ms. Wilson said, you know, scholarship opportunities, now's the time to start thinking about that. I think every year, there's some money left on the table from the Charles County Scholarship Fund. Ask all our representatives in Annapolis, and the Greater Waldorf Chase East has a scholarship fund with the College of Southern Maryland. And I know last year, the applications were much lower than historical numbers, so please take advantage of that. There are opportunities out there, and people want to help you, but you just got to reach out. All right, unless there's anything else, we will move on. We have an update now from the ACC and Mr. Sean Heil.
Good afternoon, Chair Lucas, Vice Chair Wilson, my Board of Ed, Dr. Navarro, those in the room, and those watching on TV land. The end of the year is a reasonable time for reflection. I do believe in looking back only if it helps one look forward. Let's do a brief look back at the two school years that were 2022. Just as a memory check, at this time last year, there were individual class quarantines, grade-level quarantines, and the first week back in 2022, an entire week was canceled due to COVID concerns. That's how this year started. As we returned to the normalcy of a consistent school routine, cracks started to show. Cracks in what students learned over the last two years, cracks in re-establishing what safe school environment looks like, and some noticeable cracks in staffing patterns. Our complete staff has worked very diligently in the last 12 months to work to decrease what was lost educationally due to the global pandemic. There were plans made and adjusted, then adjusted again to do what we all signed up for, educating the children of Charles County. Grace was our buzzword in the beginning of the year, and we all adjusted to the challenges of returning to the daily school routine after being home for two years. Discipline was adjusted as the system appreciated all the challenges that were suddenly needed for our complete return to the school day. While discipline issues began to rise, I'm still proud of the work that EACC and CCPS did together to address discipline issues through the end of last school year and the beginning of this year. Like the educational deficits, though, there is still work to be done in this arena. Finally, there were the unprecedented staffing issues. We remain in a staffing crisis that continues to impact schools daily across the county. We do not have enough staff, full stop. I've said several times that at least a third of our current problems would be alleviated if all buildings were properly staffed, and we all know that if anyone could wave the magic wand for us to get qualified staff across the county, all of us in this room would be fighting to wave that wand. There is no magic wand to solve the staffing issue. A look inside our school shows critical issues with the current staffing pattern. In lieu of full staff, other staff are being asked to fill in for other staff. That means in addition to doing the job you were hired to do, you're going to do at least part of someone else's job while maintaining your own job responsibilities. I want to give you one example of what this looks like from an administrator's point of view. While dropping off something in an elementary school, the principal asked me to step into his office. Counselor was in the principal's office along with three students. One was working through some concerns after kicking at walls, one was calming down after an incident and getting ready to return to class, and the last one, I believe, was waiting to meet privately with the counselor who was in the principal's office. While I was there, there was a walkie-talkie call because a student may have walked out of class. The principal contacted the AP to help handle that situation. I would like to spell out what I saw. I saw super dedicated staff working super hard to maintain the building, but, where are we at here? But I also saw a school on the brink of a disaster. They were holding it together that day. They'll hold it together the next day, but how long can they be expected to hold that together? Last month, my colleague, Don Pipkin, shared some of the stories from the front lines in their own words. While this is the reality of daily life in many buildings across the county, staff continues to receive new initiatives from CCPS and from their own buildings. How long can we, how long can you let this go on? I come with what will sound like a simple request. What can be taken off the plate of educators? There are meetings happening on how to make all of those agendas happen. Are there meetings taking place to figure out how to give grace to staff? I'm asking for your creativity. For your creativity. And what was a year ago, Dr. Navarro asked this board for three two-hour early dismissals for staff to breathe and catch up on their lives, both personal and home. Are things as challenging now as they were then? I would say yes. What can you do to give staff more time? I want to leave you with the word I've been consistently hearing from staff. Drowning. It comes from all the corners of the work we do. It comes from the classroom teacher to the principal. Drowning. It comes from the resource teacher to the employee at Starkey. Drowning. It comes from the PE teacher to the special educator. Drowning. We all know that staff working conditions are student learning conditions. EACC is here to work together with some realistic solutions to these problems, but creativity is needed to show staff that they are supported, important, and needed in Charles County.
Thanks, Mr. Heil. Next, Ms. Birch, from ASME.
I am Sarah Birch, President of ASME Local 2981. As time goes by, for everyone, things change. ASME Council 67 in Baltimore is merging with Council 3 to form a super council. Local 2981 will remain the same for now, adding new members, making... adding new members, making yearly contract changes, helping our support staff. In November, I had a meeting with Jason Tonkins, Supervisor of Transportation. Bus drivers that are employed by Charles County are eligible to join A F S M E. Many employees have already joined. A meeting is coming up soon. I will talk to the bus drivers and give them the lowdown on the benefits of joining A F S M E, such as free college, free life insurance, help with financing a house or car, and many discount on American-made products. Our administration is available to help A F S M E at the drop of a hat. This concludes Dr. Navarro. As President of A F S M E, I truly want to thank everyone. Members can contact me with their wish list for the 2023-24 contract. Our negotiation committee will do our best to fill this list. On a cold day such as today, I send my warmest wishes. Happy holidays for A F S M E.
All right, next, we're going to get an update from Dr. Navarro and Ms. Acton.
Come on up, Karen. It's like, I wonder she's going to call me up. Good afternoon, board members. So I wanted to put a presentation together to talk to you a little bit about some of the considerations and things that I'm hearing as we look forward to bringing forward officially to the Board of Education, the recommended budget from the superintendent to the Board of Education. So as you know, part of my role is to engage with the community. And the community at large involves our elected officials, our students, our parents, our staff, our community organizations. And so from the time that we start thinking about the next fiscal year and how we think about resources, part of my engagement and part of my strategy frankly is as I engage the community in multiple areas, I also go to them and ask them questions around what resources do you think the school system needs in order to address our ever-increasing challenges and also to continue to improve. So as you know, I am, we are constantly, the senior leadership is constantly engaging with central office and schools to assess from them what are their needs. Schools indeed go through a process where they prioritize things that they would like to see in their schools. And I have to say, when I went back and looked at previous years, many times while we may not directly fund them in the budget or they may not be line items in the budget, at the end of the year, if we have funding that we haven't fully utilized, we go back to that list from schools and Mr. Heim gives us all sort of updates. And then we reprioritize and try to address those issues. So I found that to be an important process, how we don't just ask schools what they need or what they want, but we actually go back and use that list when we're able to have some flexibility and resources and take a look at that. As you know, we've, you also talked about engagements officially and officially with elected officials. I also have those as well. I have my monthly meetings with the collective bargaining group leadership from whom you just heard of, so that I can keep a pulse on what is coming from, what are their interests and what do they also have some input in as we move forward. And I have to say, I am very, very proud of the leadership that we have here in Charles County and their approach to collaboratively engage with me and my staff. I meet with parent leaders, P T O, P T S O, parent leaders, as well as meeting with parent leaders in informal and formal settings. And of course, I ask them about their particular student, but I also ask in terms of the school system or your local schools, what are you hearing? What are some of the needs? And I just want to say, they appreciate it and they email me. So they walk away and they're like, okay, you want to know. And they have emailed me. And so I just appreciate the presidents who have come back. And they do, if you ask, they do generate a list of things and that influences sort of my thinking as I'm listening to different groups. We sit aside, Dr. Jones and I, with students regarding issues around school safety issues. The Sheriff's Office began this initiative along with me last year. We've continued it through the years and I think it has been very, very useful as we tackle issues of engagement and issues of safety and student voice in that area. And my hope is that we expand it. We talked about Emira's role, but more student leadership voices to come forward and tackle all aspects of the school system and their input as the board moves forward and discusses policies and as the superintendent looks at rules and decisions system-wide. As you're aware, I meet with community members and nonprofit organizations. And this is my opportunity to also say, please invite the superintendent to your meetings. I have been very, very privileged to been invited to a lot of places and the community asks really good questions. They have a strong history of what has happened in Charles County. That is always very useful to me to understand where we were, where we are, and then where we need to be. And then, you know, I'm constantly looking at what else is happening across other school systems and across the state. So next one. So I want to talk about a couple of emerging themes. Some of these obviously are not new to you, but I just want to bring them up as we get ready to bring you a proposed budget. Definitely, we will continue an aggressive implementation of the blueprint. And when I say that, I want to talk specifically about areas of emphasis. Pre-K programs, expansions. As you're aware, by law, we this year served all Tier 1 students that per the blueprint, we are supposed to serve. We did serve some Tier 2 and Tier 3 students based on our capacity, our seat availability. One of the things that several board members have mentioned is at our legislative breakfast, one of the asks for our elected officials is to take a look at first the facility situation in order for us to fully service everything that is required, all the students that are required in the blueprint. And as we are one of few counties in the state that is actually growing in enrollment, we need to talk about facilities and we need to have support for facilities expansion so that we can support the requirements of the pre-K, four-year-olds, and eventually the three-year-olds. And we've been working on creative solutions, as the board is aware. We partnered with College of Southern Maryland. We took over their early childhood building. Mr. Heim will begin to do a lot of renovation and hopefully in the spring or maybe early summer. The Board of Education will be doing a ribbon cutting ceremony so that next school year, we can service anywhere between 100 and 121, 25 pre-K students in that facility. So we're not waiting to see, to think about space limitations. We are getting ahead of that and trying to do as much as possible. But the numbers are large and this is a county that is growing in size of student enrollment. So we need to also be thinking long-term about the facility requirements that we'll need. I wanted to also remind you that the blueprint's not only about early learning and pre-K programs. There's a lot of components around college and career readiness, specifically around workforce development. There are some requirements that we work with our local workforce development board so that we, and really provide funding for them to work alongside with us around college and career readiness for students. And we are going to work hopefully regionally, but for sure in Charles County with the workforce development board on what does that mean. We're going to have to come together with an M O U and that needs to happen as we move into next school year. We've expanded our career and technical education certification options and opportunities, but we're going to need to support more opportunities to ensure that students are able to get those certifications and be successful at getting them. It is an important metric and so that is something that we need to dedicate resources to do. And as you're aware, not because the blueprint required it, but it is in the blueprint. We started an early college program. And so eventually, we want this program to be more accessible to more families. And so the resources that it takes to expand this program are also going to be a theme that will emerge as we move forward. Next slide. So one of the things that I heard from staff, talking to staff in schools, talking to leadership in schools, and also talking to students, is the need to have more adults to support student engagement and student good behavior, positive behavior, if you will. So we're thinking through what does that mean and what are the resources that would make that happen? How are we organized? What are our ratios of administrators to numbers of students, size of school buildings? Again, we're a growing school system. How do we compare to other school systems? What other staff members can come and be part of the school system to support redirecting of student behavior, engagement with students, de-escalation, early on, relationship building, so that our students are engaged and our schools continue to thrive? And then one of the things that we, that I have talked about quite a bit is the school system has adopted a rigorous, aligned set of instructional materials, in particular for reading and mathematics, and we're continuing that into high school. Those resources need to continue to be purchased. And so that is a need also that you'll hear more about as we think about the resources moving forward. As we are onboarding the incoming board, we've talked about the need to enhance our operational systems. As you affectionately have heard me about the E R P system, you know, we're going to try to come out of the 1980s to circa 2022. And we're trying to do that in this year so that our departments, our data information, we can run reports that take in payroll information connected to our H R systems, connected to our, you know, I T systems and so forth. And they can run the reports that I wish for and dream about. But the really, the system needs to invest in itself as a huge multimillion-dollar organization to have upgraded systems. And we are, we'll be bringing updates, but for sure, as we think about the budget resources, it is indicative that this area still continues to be in a budget request format because we need those funds to make sure that we keep this system running operationally as effective as it needs to be. One thing that is important to note is we are, the board has supported and we are looking forward to the opening of a new charter school, Pesota Charter School. So there will be obviously additional costs to that. And then increased operation cost, fuel for cars has gone down, fuel for buses, not so much. So as you look at the next budget request, you will see that. Just our operations costs, our materials and so forth is just a part of inflation. And then finally, I want the board to understand that we are constantly thinking about being competitive and attractive in terms of salaries and benefits for all of our employees. We have currently, we want to make sure that after the board requested a study for the salaries of A F S M E employees, that we continue to be competitive in comparison to market value. We want to think about all of our employees and their wages and think about what makes sense. So just want to make sure that the community is clear that we really do appreciate the support in the board in really thinking through how we do that moving forward with our resources. So next steps, just for the purposes of the community, this is sort of the appetizer, but the main course is being served in January. The superintendent will be presenting the draft of the F Y 2024 budget to the Board of Education. So I look forward to Ms. Acton, actually, will be doing a lot of that presentation. And so her and her staff will be here and we will be providing a detailed presentation to the board. February through March, we, the board will approve the proposed budget during the February board meeting. Before that, there'll be a work session at the end of January where the board will unpack and ask lots of questions from staff about the budget that was put forth for them. The approved Board of Education budget is submitted to the Charles County Commissioners. And we also sent the request for non-recurring cost exclusions to the Maryland State Department of Education. In a usual year between April and June, the Maryland General Assembly votes on the state's budget, which determines our state funding. So Karen eventually gets her real number. She's been working through educated guesses, but she gets her real numbers and she's happy and she's able to get the information released in terms of our allocation from the state officially in June. County government, after questions and presentations to them, approves our county budget. And our local funding is finalized around May. And then the board will do a final approval based on what the county commissioners approve in terms of the budget in June, at the board meeting in June. So those are just some steps just for the public knowledge of the community. Do you have any questions for us?
Very much appreciate the presentation. Questions from any board members? Mr. Hancock.
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Dr. Navarro. I know the last few months, you've heard me ask a lot about pre-kindergarten and mainly due to changes within the blueprint. And it's good to see pre-kindergarten on your feedback from the community. And I guess the question I have, and I'm assuming I know the answer to this, but I just want to make sure. I know under the blueprint, it does call for a certain amount of time that some of Tier 2 and all of Tier 3 pre-K students would be charged as an enrollment fee. What I would like to see, and then I'm going to ask if we are, when we develop our budget, are we developing the budget, asking for the money to cover that cost?
So we are developing the budget with first and foremost, thinking about the required law. And the required law for next school year doesn't yet bring on Tier 2 and Tier 3 requirements or options. And that is something for the board to take a look at. I suspect that we will be running analysis. Actually, I know exactly what they're doing. Ms. Acton, following the legislative breakfast, I asked Ms. Acton and Mr. Lowndes to sit together with their teams and actually create a document that is a spreadsheet that allows us all to view and that will be emailed to all, to the board members and the elected officials that were at the legislative breakfast. And it'll have, in a chart format, it'll allow you to see the budget required to serve, let's say, all Tier 1. Obviously, we have to serve Tier 2 and Tier 3 students. How much state funding we are getting per student. And right now, as just as a reminder, we do get about 11,000 and change from the state. A reminder that our per pupil allocation for any student K through 12 is around 16,000. But the state allocation will be growing as well as the definition of what tier one stu-, uh, means. Um, and so I want you to be able to see that. That will be something that we will give to you. And I think, uh, the board in January may be asking questions about that as well, but I wanna make sure that you have the projected enrollment that we expect to see and the, uh, cost based on that enrollment if we were to make decisions to, um, fund or request funding to fully serve tier two and tier three students. The other thing that I think we wanna take a look at is in terms of our current facilities, as I mentioned earlier, we were able to support some tier two and tier three. But those were because our classrooms in certain geographical locations of the county were already full in terms of tier one students, and then we had some space and we were able to, to welcome others. Um, and we wanna see the, the space situation also as we open the CSM. So I'm just trying to get you all that data so that as you are coming into January and onwards, you have that data to make some requests, if you will, or adjustments.
Okay, thank you. And Chairman, just as FYI, and I'll, I'll bring this up under, uh, future agenda items. Um, but, um, I, I do think, and I'll, I'll bring it up then, but I do think it, as we bring the new board in, the discussion should be ha-, had amongst us, how do we wanna approach pre-kindergarten?
Sure.
Monetarily.
And to your comment, um, please, correct me if I'm mistaken, but the, the blueprint allows for LEAs to charge. There's nothing, the blueprint does not stipulate that you shall charge, but it allows for LEAs to charge for tier three students and on, on a sliding scale to tier two. And then the issue is, we are not reimbursed from the state for tier three students.
That's correct.
So, there, I mean, that, that's, that's a subtle, but it, but important distinction.
Yes, and, and one additional note on this, the other thing is also the facilities. So right now, with the facilities that we have, even if we decided we were going to, um, to fund or pay for every student that wanted, uh, pre-K in the school system, um, we are not fully capable to, to, with the facilities itself. Hence why one of the big topics in our legislative breakfast with our delegation is around facilities. So there is the question of how do we fund, but there's also the question of what's the facilities? And hopefully, the information that we provide to the board will help you gauge those so you have a sense of, um, how do those two interact as we make system-wide decisions.
And part of the analysis will be, um, how the additional space requirements, we'll have to, Mr. Hyman, on portables or whatever, because at this point, there's not enough space.
Yeah.
And, and one thing I just wanna mention too, is that the pre-K funding is not part of our general funding from the state. So our enrollment numbers do not include pre-K. So it's a whole different animal. And that funding, um, you know, we have to take into consideration as a system, what we're getting from the state, and then the rest of it, if we're gonna fund outside of that, would have to come from our, um, our operational budget.
And, and as a final comment, the, we, we heard the comments from, um, from Mr. Hyler earlier about, about, you know, hiring and every, every LEA is faced with the same challenge. So it's, it's easy to say, we'll, we'll create all these extra classrooms, but then you have to staff them and define the people and the resources, which you, you mentioned in your presentation. It's not just the one-time cost of the building, but it's the operating cost if you open up a new facility. So it's something that, that we're all gonna have to be cognizant of. Any final comments from anybody, Ms., uh, Ms. McGraw?
I just have a question under the emerging, uh, themes. Uh, one of the bullet points has access to effective and rigorous instructional materials. Are we finding success with what we're using right now, or are you anticipating, um, different reading and math approaches? And I'm talking mainly about elementary.
Yes, um, I would say that our interventions, um, and our core instructional materials are, are solid. They've been, um, reviewed by others. Uh, what we need to tackle is the time and support for professional learning, um, and for teachers to work together and to be able to have time to observe each other's practices. Uh, remember, when we have a lot of new individuals to the workforce and maybe individuals who themselves are new to education in some ways, uh, we are having to provide just a lot more professional development and supports, um, as a school system, uh, to make sure that they are connected, they're supported, and they are learning the pedagogical approaches, um, and teaching the, um, the curriculum that we've selected.
Okay, thanks.
Any other comments, questions? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
At this time, we are going to, uh, we're gonna take a little break and we're gonna venture out into the hall and, uh, or downstairs, as Dr. Navarro has just corrected me. And, uh, um, staff has, has set up a few things, um, so that we can, uh, have some, say goodbyes to, to the people in central office and other places. So we're gonna take a break and we're gonna reconvene at two forty-five. So Kyle, please take us off. Okay, welcome back, everybody. We're gonna continue, uh, with our Board of Education meeting. Uh, thanks Superintendent for, uh, organizing, uh, a little break and farewell for the board members who are leaving. That was, uh, very thoughtful. Uh, next up is Mr. Heim.
Good afternoon, everyone. Today I am joined by Steve Andrews, who is our Director of Planning and Construction. We have two items today. We have a P-three, public-private partnership discussion and presentation, and we also have the project status update. Uh, but first I'd like to just provide some thanks. I'd like to thank you for your support and appreciation for staff in the Office of Supporting Services and Operation during your years of service. Our board members have been highly visible at events, tours of construction sites, groundbreaking and dedication ceremonies, groundbreaking and dedication ceremonies. You've advocated for additional funding, have not been afraid to ask the tough questions of staff, like, why does that principal not get their own bathroom?
That's right. And don't forget down the road, McGraw Memorial Bathroom.
Seriously, thank you for all you've done for the students, staff, parents, and citizens of, of Charles County. At this point, we're gonna move on to our presentation on public-private partnerships. All right, so the charge. During the two thousand twenty-two legislative session, the Maryland General Assembly adopted Senate Bill nine sixteen, House Bill seven thirty-nine, which is a work group to study the fiscal and operational viability of public-private partnerships for Charles County Public Schools, which charged the work group to study the public-private partnership as a model for school construction in Charles County. The bill became effective on June first, two thousand twenty-two. In June, Charles County Public Schools staff contacted the appointed work group members to schedule the first meeting. The first meeting was conducted on July twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-two. To date, the work group has participated in seven public meetings. The work group invited staff from Prince George's County Public Schools, Charles County Government, and the town of La Plata to present and discuss various topics at the six prior meetings. The work group was charged with presenting the findings in a report by December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-two. The purpose. The work group shall study the fiscal and operational viability of using public-private partnership for financing, constructing, maintaining, and operating schools in Charles County. Implementation of a public-private partnership by Charles County Public Schools, and how a public-private partnership may relieve the significant burden for funding new school construction and renovations for Charles County Public Schools, and make recommendations regarding using a public-private partnership for new school construction and maintenance and rehabilitation of schools to meet the identified needs at a lower cost. The work group members. Two senators were appointed from the President of the Senate. They included Senator Arthur Ellis and Senator Michael Jackson. Two delegates appointed by the Speaker of the House. They included Delegate Deborah Davis and Delegate Edith Patterson. Two members of the Board of Charles County Commissioners, appointed by the Board of Charles County Commissioners. They included Commissioner Thomasita Coats and Commissioner Amanda Stewart. Two members of the Charles County Board of Education, appointed by the Chairperson of the Charles County Board of Education. They included Board Chairperson Mike Lucas and Board Member Jennifer Abel. Also included the Chair of the IAC, the Interagency Commission on School Construction, and that was Alex Donahue, the Deputy Director for Field Operations for the IAC. And lastly, included the Executive Director of the Maryland Stateing Authority, and that was Eric Johnson, the Senior Vice President of Capital Projects Development Group. And it, lastly, it included, uh, work members, uh, from the Board of Education, which included Dr. Maria Navarro, Superintendent of Schools, Eric Swartz, Staff Fattivity, myself, Chief of Operations and Supporting Services, and Steve Andrews, Director of Planning and Commission. And we elected a Chairperson, uh, which was Mr. Michael Lucas.
So next, we're gonna talk about what a P-three is. P-three, uh, is called a P-three because of the three Ps, private, public, partnership. So it is an innovative way to contract for the delivery of public infrastructure and related services. Until recently, the P-threes that existed in the DC area were road-related projects. Most of the toll lane expansion projects that you've seen happen are P-threes. However, there is a contract right now with Prince George's County Public Schools that is a P-three. Uh, P-three is a contract between a public agency, in this case, a school system, and a private partner. In a typical agreement, the private partner can either finance, so there's four options. You can either finance and construct the facility, finance, construct, and maintain the facility, or finance, construct, maintain, and operate the facility. Uh, which model you pick determines what, how many partners you have. Cause typically, the partners that build the fir-, build the structures or the infrastructure are not the same that maintain it. The, um, private partner is required to maximize the life of the facility and hand the asset back to the public agency in excellent condition. And at the end of the contract, the school system would operate and maintain the facilities. So as mentioned, you have the, uh, four types of structures, and the P-three terms can vary, anywhere between twenty and thirty years.
As a result of the seven meetings that were held, a final report was developed, and that has been shared with all of the work group members and sent, uh, to the state senate, also to the House of Delegates, to the Charles County Commissioners, and to all of our board members. Uh, one of the parts of the report is an executive summary, so I'm gonna go ahead and read through that executive summary. In order to conduct a fiscal feasibility analysis, the work group recommends hiring a financial advisor to examine the viability of a public-private partnership for Charles County Public Schools. After speaking with Prince George's County Public Schools and consulting with an individual familiar with the necessary process, it is reasonable to assume that CCPS can contract with a financial advisor no later than April first, two thousand twenty-three. The work group recommends funding sources are identified should a P-three option be considered. The financial advisor will work with CCPS to establish the P-three potential package. The financial advisor will then take the potential P-three package to the private investor market to determine its viability. This will establish the investment size, and CCPS will be able to set the P-three term and necessary yearly funding. The work group further recommends that the P-three design, finance, construct model for any renovation or construction projects for Charles County Public Schools. Charles County Public Schools staff does not believe a P-three model is needed for new construction at this time, based on current enrollment trends. See elementary, middle, and high school enrollment trends through two thousand thirty-one. CCPS staff believes it could be an option in the future if enrollment growth outpaces the school system's ability to address capacity needs through the traditional capital improvement process, the CIP. The work group recommends considering a P-three option to address capacity needs when enrollment growth outpaces the current capacity and new construction that is needed is not supported through the traditional funding sources. Additional funding considerations for a P-three model for Charles County Public Schools could include the creation of early childhood learning centers to address the needs for expanded full-day pre-kindergarten. This P-three option could allow CCPS to accelerate the delivery of pre-, pre-K classroom space at elementary schools across the county and make spaces available at the existing elementary schools. This option is not only a need for CCPS, but across the state, given the requirements of the blueprint law. And lastly, if a P-three model moves forward, the work group recommends that CCPS also package several renovations together in the future to address aging, aging infrastructure, capitalize on savings through economies of scale, prototype opportunities, deferred maintenance, and accelerated delivery of new schools compared to the traditional CIP process.
Next, we have some things to consider. In most P-threes, there's still a need for varying level of funding. Funding sources would need to be established, cause as of now, there are not funding sources to, um, support a P-three. Uh, as was mentioned, a P-three term can be anywhere between twenty and thirty years, and the private partners would put up the money at the beginning to do the project, and then the, they would get yearly payments back over that term of twenty to thirty years. And so, as of now, there are no funding sources that support a model like that for Charles County. Current enrollment data and projected growth does not support the need for P-three to address capacity. Since construction savings come through bundling of projects to incur savings through economy of scale, obviously, if you are doing multiple schools of the same level that utilizes a prototype and you can order three tons as many, uh, steel beams for three schools as you would for one, there's a cost savings for that. And if it's all under one contract, there's a cost savings for that. And again, prototypes and doing the work in a short period of time. Another benefit of using a P-three for new construction requires multiple new schools under construction at one time. Schools should be constructed using prototype design, contracted one builder to achieve the greatest value through increased buying power and, um, repeat design-construction. Charles County does not have the projected demand at this time for multiple schools of the same level under construction at the same time, based on our enrollment trends. While we are still a growing county, we are not growing so rapidly that we cannot keep pace and need to build multiple elementaries or multiple middle or multiple high school at the same time.
Could you expand a little bit on, on Prince George's and, and that model?
Absolutely.
Because that, that's, that's the model that they use, yeah?
So as I mentioned before, uh, there is a P-three right now. It's the Phase One P-three that is in place with Prince George's County that is under construction for six middle school buildings. Um, one caveat to that is it's actually five traditional middle schools and one K-through-eight middle school. They have all been, uh, purchased at the same time, procured, excuse me, at the same time through one design-build contractor, and theirs is a design-build-finance-maintain model. So there are several partners involved, not only the, the general contractor who is building it, but also a company that will do the maintenance on the building over the thirty-year term of the ju-, of the schools. Um, their contract is, I believe, nine hundred million dollars for these six buildings. And the county is, Prince George's County is repaying fifteen million a year as part of this agreement, and Prince George's County Public Schools is repaying fifteen million dollars a year as part of this contract. So thirty million dollars a year over thirty-year term to pay for these six facilities. Uh, but they are being delivered as prototypes, as mentioned, so you have that savings, you have the savings of one contractor doing all six buildings. So you have repetitive design, you have, um, the buying power that goes along with doing six at one time. You also have the benefit of them being able to do them all at one time to meet a capacity demand that they have right now. They, um, don't have to wait, and it could be as much as twelve years to do all six of them if they would've done it through the traditional CIP process. And as we know, the value of a dollar today is different than the value of a dollar tomorrow. Today's money is usually worth more than tomorrow's money. So factor those things in, and, um, they also have deferred maintenance. So they have facilities that these new buildings will replace that would need major work to them done, and by building the new facility, you eliminate that deferred maintenance, you eliminate that facility, and so you also have some savings there. So all of that was packaged to create this first P-three. Now, they are looking and working on a second phase of P-three that is a little bit different in that with the Built to Learn, um, law that was enacted and the money that was put forward, there were special clauses in there for Prince George's County to fund a P-three for them, and I believe it's four hundred or four hundred and fifty million dollars was authorized through that for them. So the second phase of P-three that they're studying now will be mostly funded through that, and I'm sure there will be still some local commitment required. Uh, but that changes how that P-three functions. Um, we do not have the benefit in Charles County of that kind of money related to Built to Learn. We were allocated twenty-five million, and the money we were allocated went towards the project that's under construction with the McDonough High School addition and, uh, limited renovation of part of the building, the kindergarten addition at, um, Malcolm Elementary School, and the kindergarten addition at JP Ryan Elementary School. So.
Now, appreciate that. I think it's just important to have context. Um, there, there were several members of the group that, that said we should, you know, examine the Prince George's, um, as a baseline, and, and for all the reasons you just mentioned, it's, it's not applicable here in, in Charles.
We had Jason Washington, who's the Director for their P3 schools in Prince George's County Public Schools, come down and give a presentation to the workgroup.
Yep. Thanks for that.
Yep. So we'll end this slide saying that the workgroup was saying that this option could be and should be revisited in the future. Next, one of the reasons we suggested as the staff to the workgroup that a model for Charles County would be the design-build-finance model is because of the information listed on the screen, which has to do with the marks that we get regularly from the state as it relates to our maintenance and our operations of the building. We use centralized work order systems to track work orders and to get them completed. And 90% of those work orders are closed within 30 days. So based on that, those are factors we do not believe justify the same need as Prince George's for Charles with the maintenance component. And then the same goes for operations. With the state inspections, we always get good marks, high marks, for cleanliness and daily operations. We have centralized operations and building staff who support the folks at the schools. We use automation and technology for their cleaning of the buildings and upkeep as well as the foreman and the grounds maintenance folks that support the school staff. So based on that was another reason we didn't believe the operate component of a P3 was something that would necessarily need to be applicable for Charles County.
And we wouldn't want to also finance it over a 20 to 30-year period as well.
That's correct. Yep. So the last portion of this is on new replacement schools. So as we mentioned with the Prince George's County model, they are building new schools, but they're replacement schools. So they're building a school on an existing school grounds, and you operate out of the existing school. You build the new one. When you're done, you move into the new one, and you tear down the old one. Part of the issue we have here is that not all of our facilities have adequate space that we could build replacement schools on them. So that's a thing to consider. But we, again, believe that this is something we should revisit in the future if we move forward with P3 because there may be opportunities for it in certain locations.
Questions or comments?
I appreciate the presentation. And just for the board's and the public's knowledge, the slide entitled Executive Summary, those bullets were taken verbatim from the final report that was issued to all the stakeholders. Question, comments? Ms. Wilson?
So time is running out. I would have loved for this board to have afforded more opportunity other than this little brief session to have a discussion because we understand the historical context. And I'm going to bring it up again. This, in part, this discussion about financing of new construction really started when there were changes made to the Adequate Public Facilities document. And I think anything that is done should always be done through two things, a fiscal impact and also through an equity lens. For whatever reasons, the county commissioners made the changes to the Adequate Public Facilities, in essence, creating essentially a urgent need for building of new schools. I'm glad to hear that the workgroup's recommendation is to do just that, to hire a financial advisor. To me, this should have been done a long time ago before making the changes to the Adequate Public Facilities document. But it is what it is. I want to thank both Dr. Navarro and my colleagues and the Charles County Public School staff for their efforts and really looking at this. I am an advocate of change as long as it's, there is benefit for the school system. And I look forward to the fiscal impact before moving forward on the P3. The other comment that I would add is it would be nice, for the public's sakes, for the taxpayers, to say, what are the other financial possibilities? Because there is other creative financing. But there was, for whatever reason, tendencies from our elected officials to lean towards P3. But I can tell you, the public is going to be very interested with this change. With that said, now, we, as a board, just got the, I guess, draft report yesterday, late afternoon. I haven't had a chance to read it completely. And we have not gotten the final minutes of the workgroup. My question is, will that, is that information, will that information be accessible to the public?
Yes. And what you received is actually the final report that was mailed out. And the minutes, the minutes are done, the kudos to staff. All the meetings are recorded. So staff has to actually sit through and take the minutes after the meeting. So those are done, and those will be sent out. And those are all part of the public record, too. And just so everyone is aware, you know, this charge came, it came from the legislation, okay, through our county commissioners. And the charge was to be completed by the end of the calendar year. Ms. Abel and myself, we're insistent that we get this done before that because we wanted to have something to bring to this board. That was only right. And so that's why we pushed to have the report finished earlier. And, you know, the board received all the minutes from all the meetings. But I appreciate your comments, Ms. Wilson. And at the end of the day, when you look at what was done in Prince George's County, they, it's a trade-off. You got something quicker, but you're paying for it, okay? I mean, that's the simplest way to look at it. Rather than the traditional routes of obtaining funding for new school construction, we clearly demonstrated that we didn't have that same sort of need. So there's no driver to doing something quickly. If there is an opportunity through a P3 or something else to build the facility cheaper, I mean, we're always interested in that. But we weren't, we were simply not in the same paradigm as Prince George's County. And that was clearly articulated in the final report.
So at this point, we're waiting on selecting a financial advisor? When do we anticipate that's going to be done? And of course, the county commissioners are going to pay for it, correct?
So, go ahead.
I'll let Mr. Lucas answer that question.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So we expect, we expect to have somebody in the next couple of months. And there's a process for that. And not to pass the buck, but I'll look to the superintendent because we had this discussion. You know, you have to be careful. You don't want to completely drive everything because then, based on the outcome, people may say, well, you did all this work and you paid for it. And when you don't get the outcome you want, then people may not take that in the right way. So I think a discussion with the commissioners is warranted on funding of that. I will point out that a few years ago, when we had the GWO, that's too many W's, G-W-O study done, the commissioners funded that. And that's for everyone that's not familiar with that. That was a very thorough and good report on the state of our facilities. Still used today. And I think that, you know, since it's the commissioners that pushed for this, that, you know, there ought to be some cost sharing at a minimum involved.
So one last question. So this does not mean that we will be doing P3.
No, not at all.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that, hey, more analysis is warranted. And based on that analysis, will the board, the next board will make a determination?
It would also require additional legislation at the state level.
Yeah. So that's another thing to be clear about. That's, there's legislative things that have to happen. And that's, that's why people in the committee were pushing hard. And, but again, since we didn't see a need, an immediate need, that we're at where we are now in having a financial advisor look at things. And it's something that can always be revisited. Mr. Hancock?
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you for the presentation. Quick question, and just out of curiosity. If, down the road or whenever, if this body were to implement or use a private-public partnership for funding of a project, who would make that determination of whether we use the P3 or use CIP fund? Would it be us or the county commissioners?
So at that time, when decisions would be made, if there were legislation acted for the use of P3s, we'd be making a decision of looking at our capacity and our capacity needs and how soon we need that capacity. But in order to pursue this P3, again, we need to have funding sources. And that's one of the, you know, the issues right now is we have not identified or established funding sources. Whereas with the CIP, we know through our 10-year average what we can expect in, you know, every year from the IAC and it helps guide the projects and what we prioritize and the order and how many we can do at one time. But again, if enrollment growth does get to a point in the future where it outpaces our ability to keep up with that, you know, P3, you know, is a viable option. But again, if there are funding sources out there and, you know, using the local example with Prince George's County Public Schools, you know, they're getting funding sources from their local government, as Steve referenced. They're getting $30 million, I'm sorry, $15 million a year from the county government for the next 30 years. And also, they're using $15 million from their own operating budget over the next 30 years for a $900 million project for those six schools. So if we, again, Steve and I love, I mean, we love putting our hard hats on. We love, you know, getting the shovels out and doing the groundbreaking ceremonies. We love having projects. We want to make sure that we have the funding source to do it. And we also want to make sure we're doing it in a way which is, you know, the best use of the Charles County and, you know, and the state as well, taxpayer money. So, you know, it is, as Steve referenced, you know, it's been in practice with highways and some other projects around the country. But in terms of schools, it is something that is still relatively new with the schools. So like with anything that is any new initiatives, there's always a little bit of a learning curve that occurs, you know, with that. And in Prince George's County, you know, they're still in the stage of building these schools. So they're not yet, you know, occupying and operating those buildings yet. So there's some things to see that how that plays out over the next few years and, you know, over the long term, over the next 30 years. When you are, in the case which they are doing, they're financing that maintenance of those buildings. So those are some additional costs that we don't think we would want to incur. If we do pursue that, it'd be something with the design, build, and finance, but most likely not the maintain and operate model.
And if I could, again, since we're not in this mode where we have to build a number of facilities of the same type, if we all, and all being us and the commissioners, agreed that, yes, we need to build a facility, the quickest and quite probably the most economical way to do that is just for the commissioners to forward fund that facility, which they've done in the past with other elementary schools. No one's going to be able to borrow money cheaper than a county government with a AAA bond rating. And so, and you have to think of this holistically, too, because again, it's not just building a facility, it's operating a facility. So, so it, more work needs to be done. And the financial advisor, I'm sure, will look at that. You know, does it make sense just to expand on a couple of other facilities that already exist? And that will all be part of that financial analysis before any decision gets made. Mr. Andrews?
Yeah, one other comment I should add. In the conversations we had with Jason Washington, and Mr. Heim mentioned, from Prince George's County, they are not looking at this as the absolute way to go for everything going forward. They're looking for it as this is a measure to address the issues they have right now. They recognize that there are limitations to it in that you want to package schools of similar levels. Trying to package maybe a couple of elementaries, a middle, and a high school doesn't work because you're not going to get repetitive design. Things aren't going to work the way you want them to. They don't believe that it is going to fix all of their issues that they have. So they're going to use it, but they're not going to use it for everything going forward. And I think that's an important point to put out there to the board, to the public.
All right. Thanks for your comments. Appreciate it. You have something else to discuss?
Project status update. So that was posted to Board Doc. So we don't really have anything to add to that. Current projects are progressing well. So we entertain any questions or comments regarding project status update.
Winter time is always fun with potential weather delays. No, no, that's that potential.
Well, thankfully, most of the projects are at a point where they're not trying to come out of the ground where the winter weather is an issue. So you can do masonry work in the winter. You just have to use a different mixture in your mortar, and you have to protect the masonry to keep it from, you know, freezing and so on. But the masons are all familiar with what has to happen with those things, so.
And they'll do temporary heating inside. Once they get the facility enclosed, they continue work with interior work. It's affected by the cooler temperatures.
All right. Very good. Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate it.
Thank you all.
Ms. Miller, how are you?
Doing well. How about you?
I'm fine. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Chairperson Lucas, Vice Chairperson Wilson, board members, Dr. Navarro, staff and guests. My name is Chris Miller, and I am your Blueprint Implementation Coordinator here for our monthly update. Wanted to give you an update. We are at a time right now where there are lots of reports that are due per the Blueprint. And these are all of the reports that, from our last board meeting, that we have either submitted on time or we are currently working on. Just a reminder for everyone, even though our Blueprint plan is not finalized yet, we are deep into the Blueprint work as we are required to report on many different tasks, including how we're using federal funding to address the learning losses due to the pandemic. And you'll see that with all of those reports that are due, that were due on December 1st. December 22nd, we have a pre-K data report due to the AIB and MSDE. That report was originally due earlier in the year, but it was pushed back. We have our summer school report due to the Legislative Policy Committee due on January 1st. And January 24th, we have another financial report due to MSDE. So we've had a busy couple of weeks based on what the AIB has released between our last meeting and today. December 1st, the AIB had a long meeting to review and to discuss all of the feedback that was provided. And the AIB voted to approve the Blueprint Comprehensive Plan. And with that plan came the criteria for success and also a guidance document for us to complete. On December 2nd, the final documents were released at that time. The draft documents are very similar to what the final documents are. There was a lot of feedback that was provided. But a lot of the feedback that was provided by various stakeholders had implications for legislative changes. So one of the biggest changes that they made from the draft plan to the actual plan is that they numbered the questions sequentially, which was very, it's very helpful. Now, there are 164 questions, if anybody wants to know. So with this enormous document, and you know that we have been working around this for over a year now with our steering committees, MSDE has begun already their technical assistance meetings for us. They started on Thursday, December 8th, and they have technical assistance meetings every day between that day and before the last day of our winter break. And these technical assistance sessions that are scheduled in the month of December are pillar-specific. So yesterday, I was able to attend the Pillar 1 Technical Assistance Meeting, and today is the Pillar 1. and today is the Pillar 2. And with that, they are going question by question and allowing us to ask questions that we may have or clarifications that we need in order to address the question. And they're using that feedback to plan further technical assistance meetings in January and February. Plan development sessions will be hosted by MSD-E every Wednesday during the months of January and February. Individual LEA meetings, we can schedule with them on Mondays and Fridays during the month of January and February. And they will have office hours every Wednesday evening in January and February for any clarifying questions that we may have. And one of the things that we really advocated was to ensure that those technical assistance meetings are not at the very beginning of this process. Because once we start really diving into the questions and composing the responses and looking at with comparing it to the criteria for success, we know we may have questions about it. So we were really advocating for those technical assistance opportunities to be available to us throughout the months of January and February. So with that, we have met with, we have met with our senior leadership team. Thank you. We have met with our senior leadership team. And I created a document that broke each of the questions down. And what we did was we assigned who the lead person would be because of the work that they're already involved in. And we identified other stakeholders within the system that would also help with the answering of these questions within the plan. Senior leadership team reviewed this document to ensure that the items and the tasks were aligned to the right person. And the steering committee leads are very deep into this work, as you know, because you all are serving within our steering committees. And so they're working with identified staff to map out these various working sessions because we are limited to the amount of space that we can have within our blueprint plan. I think the plan is 100 pages or 99 pages, and we have an additional 99 pages for 164 questions to address. With those questions will come artifacts. That does not count in our 99 pages, which is nice to be able to highlight the things that we're doing here in Charles County. We have scheduled internally feedback sessions. And we want to make sure that, you know, when you're reading a document and you're so involved in the work and you're so laser-focused on specific questions, we want to make sure that we have feedback internally so that we miss things, right? It doesn't matter how many times you go over it, how many times you review it. We want to make sure that our plan is forward-facing to our stakeholders throughout Charles County. Not just educators, not just teachers, but we want parents to be able to understand what our plan says. So we've established timelines, working backwards from that March 15th date. Thank you, Mr. Dr. Jones. And so part of that timeline also includes building the capacity in January and February by pillar. We are hoping to do a deep dive at the monthly updates in January and February at the board meetings. We are looking at an end-of-February town hall meeting to share the highlights of the plan that we are creating here in Charles County. And we're hoping with the February board work session that we can really dive into this work. Are there any questions or comments?
Ms. McGraw.
Just want to say thank you very much for the updates. I have truly appreciated them. And I like the fact that the upcoming, you're going to be having a town hall. I think that, hope that the community will take advantage of that to learn, you know, more about the blueprint and what's going to, how it's going to affect their children.
Yes, we've had, during the month of November, and even last night, we hosted a town hall meeting with the principal's advisory county, or committee, excuse me. And we held several town halls during the month of November to try and get the input of our community members because we thought it was important to give that input back to the AIB.
Perfect. Thank you.
The town hall, if that could be, I'm sure, you know, part of it's in-person, but if it could be virtual too, that would, that would be really good. So we can get more people looking at it.
And just on a personal note, I'd like to publicly thank the current board right now for all of your support with the blueprint and your advocacy. And I hope to continue to hear your voices as you leave, some of you leave your roles here as board members. Thank you very much.
I have no doubt you'll have a lot of support from the folks behind you. They were, when the Southern Maryland tour was here just a few days ago, and it was, it was good to see a lot of data related to the blueprint. Anything else from anyone? Okay. Thanks, Ms. Miller. Appreciate it. Next, any unfinished business for the board? Oh, Ms. Abel.
Just curious, on our spreadsheet of unfinished business, our new agenda items, what items are still running? If we could get those on record so the new board is aware of them?
So we went, yes, so we went through those, Ms. Wilson, the superintendent, and myself. There were a couple of things that actually I had brought up a while ago that weren't addressed, but they can be addressed with the new board because they involve looking at policies, and it just wasn't going to happen in the next few months. But other than that, Ms. Wilson, I think, you brought the spreadsheet in and...
Yeah, we went through it, but most certainly, there needs to be a transition with, to share this. It is an Excel spreadsheet that has all the historical presentations and then any open ones that haven't. So that's certainly something that part of the transition has to be handed off.
Yeah.
And if need be, the vice chair normally maintains that. And if need be, if there needs to be a sit-down to cover, and also with the superintendent, he'll be more than happy to assist with the transition. It's easy. It's an Excel spreadsheet.
And it just shows, it shows historically what the board is looking at in terms of not just policy, but agenda items that the board has brought up. So it's a good historical perspective.
So typically, in the past, that spreadsheet has been shared with all board members on a monthly basis so that they can see where their agenda item requests are in the queue. And I would suggest that the new board members request that.
I'd even like to see something online like SharePoint, but that's another discussion for another day.
You know, I can get it from Ms. Wilson, and then we can transfer it to SharePoint or Google Docs and, again, stream into the 2020s.
Twenty-first century, yeah, yeah.
I'm happy to transition that spreadsheet.
Awesome. That's a good point, though, Ms. Abel. Thank you.
Okay, so how many items are still on there?
No, I think, I think we adjudicated everything, save the two that I mentioned, which were things that I brought up, not this year, but the year before, on a couple of policies, but again...
There's, there's one more item also there. School naming was also there. That's pending. And I, I can't recall the other ones, but actually, one of Mr. Lucas' policy requests from actually almost the, before I came on, was closed out, and then one of them is still pending. So I just don't recall the specifics.
Student transfer. It was regarding student transfer.
So school naming and update on non-policy.
On the student transfer, I want to say...
24 Eric left.
Eric's right there.
When I get to my other computer, I can email you that information. Not trying to get ahead of anything. I've already turned and turned over my Charles County Public Schools computer.
That's fine. I just, for the sake of everybody knowing what's still left unfinished for future agenda items.
Yeah, that's fair.
So school naming and update student transfer policy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else? Okay, is there any new business?
Eric's here.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh.
Did you still need him?
No. We're good. Okay. Any new business the board needs to consider? Okay, now look this way, future agenda items. Mr. Hancock.
Thank you, Chairman Lucas. And as I mentioned earlier, I would like to put on as a future agenda item for the upcoming board to consider, and it does involve pre-K. I would like to see that we could project pre-K enrollment that includes Tier 1, Tier 2, and Tier 3, and what that would cost with the sliding scale for Tier 2 and with the enrollment cost for Tier 3. And then I think that the board needs to make a decision. Do we want to ask, do we want to charge for students to attend pre-K? Or do we want to incorporate it in our budget and ask the commissioners to pay for free and public education? Thank you.
Can I ask just a clarification as well? Because I know Mr. Lowens is taking copious notes. I think it's also important, Mr. Hancock, to provide the current CIP facility allocation because there is the component of paying the salary cost of teachers and transportation and so forth. But the CIP facility restrictions may also restrict our ability to to provide all Tier 2 and Tier 3 all at once in certain years. And so if you would like to see a multi-year view of that, that also gives you a sense of...
Sure, that's fine. And I'm not, I guess, I'm not saying we need to open up pre-K right away for everyone across the board to attend it free of charge. But as we are expanding pre-K, there's a difference between expanding pre-K and pre-K for everyone. And I just want to see, as we go down the road through the blueprint and we meet these deadlines, what is it going to cost us and how do we, how do we want to handle that as we go through this process?
Now, that's an excellent point.
Thank you.
Dr. Navarro, you good? Okay, excellent.
No questions?
Ms. Wilson, want to go first?
Sure, Ms. Wilson.
So for future agenda items, if it's the will of the board, a couple of things. And this is a learning point for the future board members. There may be some instances here where I'm not necessarily suggesting a presentation. Sometimes the question can be provided via a staff update that the superintendent sends out. But I think it would be worth sharing, Dr. Navarro, during the student interviews, a couple of the engineering folks, students, were complaining about slow computers and the applications that are used on board-issued devices. And this is something that can either be, you know, if you could provide an update with regard to, you know, kind of looking out to see, is this just one or two students or is this a problem across the board? Because some of the CAD applications for these computers really cannot be used effectively on the Charles County Public Schools issued computers. And maybe we need to look at other devices. I don't know if there are other programs that have software that is very demanding or not, but just something, if through email update or if you have an update now or in the future.
So, I mean, so it sounds like what you're talking about, though, these are specific to certain programs
Correct.
that students are involved in. So I think, yeah, that's probably answered in an update or a later board meeting.
But that's something so that the board, future board members can, hey, the question was asked going forward. If it got answered, oh, we answered it either in an email update or at a presentation.
Do you want me to have staff answer it now and then provide, see if there's any additional information?
Yes. As long as it gets addressed.
I think, do you want to say something?
Yeah.
Can we ask Charmaine, just for the record, for recording? That's why I'm asking formally. Do you want her to come up or not? And then if you do, then come on forward, come on down, because we need you on audio.
Charmaine Thompson, Chief of Instructional Technology. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I just wanted to speak to the comment made. Basically, CTE program, we do work with the CTE director to pretty much provide the special type of devices that they need for their program. We will look back into this. Again, obviously, it could be a class that is using that CAD program that may utilize, may need a different type of device. But we do work with those, especially computer science and the other programs that are offered at North Point, where we actually order them a different kind of device based upon just the standard device that we provide all students. But certainly, if you're getting this comment, I'll work with them to figure out if what was purchased is not working. So I do appreciate that comment. And we can update the new board, update through either a board update or however you like to.
So, Mr. Lucas, if I can suggest what we can do. You mentioned it was at North Point. It is the engineering program and the CAD component of it. What we can do is we can provide on a weekly update. And just as a reminder to the board, this week was our last week before break for weekly updates. So our weekly update will come back up, starting after we come back from winter break. Perfect timing. And we can provide the specific devices that those CTE pathway programs use versus what is a typical issued device for a high school student and see if that makes... And it's not just the engineering program. There is a couple of other programs where we specify devices that are different. Another example of that is, forget high school, go all the way to pre-K and kindergarten. The kids there are not using those devices. They're actually using iPads, right? They're using some iPads, so we can provide that specifics.
But certainly, there could have been pockets where those specialized devices had not come in, so they may have been using the general devices for those students, which aren't, to my, in my opinion, equipped for the type of programming that they needed to do or the specs that were outlined for that. So certainly, we'll look into that and provide that.
All right. Awesome. Thank you.
Two other things, and this is just a suggestion. Dr. Navarro, Dr. Richard Warren, who was the 2016 Educator of the Year, oversees Men of Color's Teacher Workforce Initiative. As many of you know, African-American males make up only 2% of the teaching workforce. And his organization's charter is to see if they can mitigate. It would be nice if maybe someone from Human Resource reached out to. And I think Dr. Jones is familiar with this program. If we could have the staff just look into it and see if it's something that would be useful to Charles County Public Schools because we're always striving to mitigate the challenges with the hiring of minority teachers. And then lastly, ELL students in CTE, I would be very interested to hear what your thoughts and plans going forward. Or I think the future board would be very interested in any emphasis in that area. That demographic may need some extra supports. And just making sure that the resources are available, you know, for all students, but particularly that demographics. And that can be an update or a presentation if it's the will of the board.
So, Ms. Wilson, just to be clear, you're interested in understanding the current state of enrollment and participation? of enrollment and participation and success of English learners?
Correct.
In CTE pathways? Okay. And one thing I think is important is the strategic plan, one of the things we talked about and we have as a metric to come back to is, is how many students are enrolled and how many students are meeting the completer series? And then in pathways where you can earn an industry certification, when is that happening? And if you recall, when I first talked about this issue, I talked about underrepresentation, including students with disabilities, English language learners. And so my plan, when we come forward with the data of what does it look like this year in terms of enrollment, which pathways, how many different pathways? Based on the strategic plan, my data metric back to the board and the community is to disaggregate in a whole bunch of areas. And all of them, all of them will disaggregate with ELL. I'm happy to talk about what it looks like right now, but I plan to bring in the spring the update of what it looked like this year in terms of enrollment and participation rates, because we have to increase them anyways for all students. And ELL is one cell of population. I do note specific concerns regarding the education and support for English language learners. I see that also as a more comprehensive strategy through the entire system, not just in CTE, that we have to address as well and that we're working to address. So I just want to be clear if, how you like that moving forward as a, sort of as a way to provide that update, because it will come through the report on the metrics that are CTE, AP, and early college. Those are the high school metrics that are in the strategic plan. And all of those data metrics will be broken down by race, ethnicity, specialized group, and gender.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yep, thank you.
So, since we've recently been on the topic of the school calendar, I would like to start looking into the possibility of closing schools on a wider variety of cultural and religious holidays. These holidays would include Jewish holidays, Yom Kippur and Rosh Hashanah, the Islamic holidays, Eid al-Fitr and Eid al-Ahdha, and the Hindu holidays, Diwali. Last month, a survey was sent out to grades six through 12 to gain the student opinions on this proposition. If we look at the results, 514 students responded to the survey. Of that 514, 80% of students agreed that schools should close on these religious holidays, 12% were neutral, and 8% were against it. It was made very clear to those who took the survey that winter and spring break are subject to being shortened and the school year can be extended if schools were closed on these days. Within the survey, we provided students an opportunity to leave additional comments. The majority of students who supported school closure on these holidays made this decision for the following reasons. Firstly, many students saw this as an opportunity to educate and bring awareness to those in our school system about different religions and cultures. Students also saw this as an opportunity to not only be more inclusive of various religions, but also allow students who don't celebrate these holidays a mental health break or a day to catch up on schoolwork. Many students expressed how they prefer having scattered breaks throughout the year rather than a longer single break, which ultimately influenced their decision to get these days off. We also received a few responses from students who celebrate the holidays proposed for school closures, and they expressed how stressful it is for school to be open on these days. Many discussed that it became their responsibility to self-teach any content they missed as well as making up missed assignments. They claimed it was easier to attend school on these days and miss out on celebrations so they wouldn't get behind in school. A few students also claimed they felt overlooked within our school system and did not feel their holidays were viewed with importance. As we continue to develop calendars for later school years, we should begin considering whether or not this is something we would like to implement within our own school system. We should attempt to survey more of the population and garner their opinions. We should research other counties who currently close schools on these days and how they structure their calendars. Considering the majority of these holidays run on the lunar calendar, how would we manage that and determine what days to close schools? I believe these are all beneficial to start looking into as we continue to draft the CCPS calendar for future years.
All right. Thank you very much. So, a number of the new board members in the audience, they heard that as well. So that can be something that, that the new board, I think, will certainly consider. And there's a lot of things that can be looked at with regard to the calendar. So I appreciate all your work that you did. As usual, you did a very thorough job. So we'll make sure that happens. Thank you. Anything else? All right. Amazingly.
Can I just ask, the very last part of Amira's testimony is the ask. Eventually, that could become the staff of, the staff ask to do that research. So I just, if you can send me the transcript of what you just read so I can take verbatim the ask in case the board continues with their work, they're going to look at calendars as part of their work every year. And if we do research on that, I want to have the exact language. Thank you.
Yes, that's a good point. Thank you. Okay. So now, nothing else, want to make sure? So now we have an opportunity before our 4:30 recognition where, you know, we have students and staff members come in every month. It's a time here for the board members, and in particular, those who have served the past four years plus, to take a little time and comment and reflect on, what's the right word? The joys of being a school board member, the opportunities, the exhilaration? So we're going to have an opportunity. Is Mr. Schwartz and Ms. Mackey, were they doing anything out there?
Yes, I believe Ms. Mackey went to get the photographer, and then I think Ms. Mackey's coming up to get, to be ready when you start. She will come up.
We have some folks that want to come in that were.
Yes, that's what I was waiting for. Okay. Yeah. Sure, I'm just waiting for everyone to come in.
Yes.
Okay. Well, you know, you do your best as you can.
It's knocking over cans.
So, so as folks, as folks come in, I'll ad lib a little bit. So.
Oh, my God.
You know, there's educators, right?
Oh, my God.
And there's educators.
Oh, my God.
And then there's the goats. Right? Just like.
Oh, my God.
Just like Michael Jordan and Shaq and Messi. Yes, so.
Oh, my God.
I think it's going to be Argentina and.
You don't have to do this to make me cry.
Yeah, right.
So, we're going to start off here. By recognizing one of the goats.
That's a good way to describe it. I think that's a perfect way of describing it.
Ms. Thompson.
So, thank you all very much. So I'd like to read something here. I can never say it the way you do. Virginia.
Virginia.
That's right. There's not much that I could say, or anyone could say, about the career of Ms. McGraw. It's been extraordinary, it really has. So I'll do my best to get through this. And there's not a whole lot of people that have received this award, but she's going to be one of the few. The James E. Richmond Leadership Award.
Oh, my God.
Was established in 2013. Behind the award was a vision from former Board of Education Chairman Colonel Donald M. Wade to honor Mr. Richmond, who was Superintendent of Schools from 1996 to 2013. Richmond spent his 47-year career in education with Charles County Public Schools and retired in June of 2013. Colonel Wade, if I might add, a great man. Not only wanted to honor Mr. Richmond for his legacy, but to leave behind a prestigious honor, to recognize others who serve with the same passion, commitment, and excellence. And each year, the James A. Richmond Leadership Award is presented to a school system leader who exemplifies excellence, models commitment, and leads with passion in the support of teaching and learning. This year's recipient of the James E. Richmond Leadership Award is our own Board of Education member, Mrs. Virginia McGraw.
Thank you. Thank you.
We're not, we're not done.
My gosh.
At the end of today's board meeting, Mrs. McGraw closes a chapter in her life as a two-term board member of the Board of Education of Charles County. First elected to the board in 2014, Mrs. McGraw is a true example of someone who believes in the success of every child. From her 40-year career as an educator to the work she's done as a board member, Mrs. McGraw epitomizes the commitment, dedication, and passion for education and the achievement of children. Prior to pursuing a position of the board, Mrs. McGraw was a special education teacher, vice principal, and principal, working in several Charles County Public Elementary Schools, and retired as principal at William B. Wade Elementary School in 2014, which incidentally is where I first met you, at a craft show. During her career with Charles County Public Schools, Mrs. McGraw was recognized by the school system as a Principal of the Year. Upon receiving the award in 2009, McGraw was quoted as saying, quote, "My mantra is to believe. Teachers and parents need to believe in their children. If they do, children will succeed." Virginia McGraw is most certainly the example of someone whose belief in children has helped them to succeed. Her commitment to education did not stop with children in Charles County. McGraw has long been a member of the Maryland Association of Boards of Education, also known as MAEBE. MAEBE is a nonprofit organization dedicated to serving and supporting boards of education in Maryland and is made up of all 24 boards of education. Last year, Mrs. McGraw was named as President of MAEBE. It has been more than 30 years since a MAEBE president hailed from Charles County, and Mrs. McGraw was the ideal person to take on that role. Could not think of a more deserving person to receive the Richmond Leadership Award than our colleague and friend, Mrs. Virginia McGraw. She is the most deserving of this award for all that she has done for the school system, families, and children in Charles County. I know I can speak for the entire Board of Education when I say that it has been a pleasure working with and learning from you, Mrs. McGraw. You've made a tremendous impact on so many people throughout your career as an educator and a board member. And before we move forward with the formal award presentation, there are others who shared with us words about you and how you impacted them as educators. I ask that my fellow board members and staff here today and everyone else, just take a minute as we pause to watch a brief video.
Thank you very much. I just wanted to add that I attended many of the same activities.
When I first met Ginny in '98, the moment I met her, I knew that I wanted to work for her.
So Ginny became my principal when she was moved to Wade Elementary. However, I met her informally through other friends when she was the principal at JP Ryan. So they coined her as their Maryland mom.
Actually, first met her when she was a principal at Wade in my first term of the board.
I know Mrs. McGraw as my elementary school principal here at JP Ryan. She was a leader that was very involved. I remember seeing her around the school, in our classrooms.
I met Ginny after my first year of teaching. I transitioned to JP Ryan where she was the principal. Just going in there was a warm feeling of somebody who's very supportive.
About eight years ago, I was fortunate enough to meet Ginny during new board orientation. And it was very clear to me Ginny was very professional, very kind, and respectful of others.
She was somebody you could trust with any information, personal or professional, and she would support you.
She was someone that we didn't have to be afraid to make a mistake with. Of course, if there was something wrong, she'd let us know when she talked to us about it. But it was very positive, very comfortable with her.
She had high standards and high expectations, and she expected everybody to rise to that occasion. And we did. And you want to do a good job for her, the students, the teachers, ever, you just wanted to make her proud.
One thing that I always remember, especially working in ACHIEVE, is how inclusive she always made things. She made sure the kids at every level were visible, had time with their peers and all of their teachers. She is definitely a big reason that I'm working in this program.
In her tenure as a board member, she's provided insight that really nobody else could have done. When we would discuss things in executive session, she would talk about things that really no one else had insight in.
What made her such a great leader is how much she cares about everyone.
Very supportive, encouraging others to be leaders as well.
I piloted a program with the then task program, now ACHIEVE. She supported me in those efforts. She had us published in the local newspaper.
So Ginny taught me to take a moment to take in people's feelings when they're talking to you, and you don't always have to respond right then. They come to you to share excitements, frustrations, and many other things too, whether that be staff, parents, or students.
I remember when I first became reading resource teacher, she pulled me into her office, and she said to me, Tracy, you're in a leadership role right now, and you need to get thicker skin and don't let things bother you. And I still hear that in my mind.
She helped me in ways that weren't just within the school. It was both professionally and personally.
She treats everyone like a family.
I remember her saying, you know, always asking new folks each year for Thanksgiving, do you have somewhere to go for Thanksgiving?
When you're in leadership with MAEBE, typically in December and January, we get meetings with the leadership in both the House and Senate. I was stunned one day when I said to Ginny, Ginny, why aren't you meeting us at MAEBE? And she said, well, I want to park in the Marine Corps Stadium and take the bus down there like everybody else has to do. I want to have that experience that they have to go through in order to come down and come to legislative meetings. I think that that speaks volumes about her.
I thank you for your trust in me. And as I said to Mr. Richmond when he appointed me principal 16 years ago, I will not let you down.
Do you think that she's very deserving of the James E. Richmond Leadership Award?
No.
I think she is probably the most deserving person to get that award.
And she's just, everything a leader should be, supportive, kind, compassionate. She just made you feel safe and supported, and I think that's what every leader needs to do.
She's the example of why we do what we do. When we are frustrated, she doesn't try to convince you that you're wrong in those ideas. It's navigating the good, the bad, and everything in between to remind you as to why you're doing it.
As we know, Ginny's had some personal and family challenges in the last few years, but you would never know it. During that time, it was still about others. It was still about her colleagues. It was still about the students. And so I believe, without question, she's most deserving, and I am thrilled that she is receiving this award.
People speak of her in the highest regard, and she deserves every accolade that is given to her.
Individuals that were students when I taught at JP Ryan that have become teachers because of her. It's an impact that any principal would want, any leader would want, because it's one that's not seen right away. It's one that's seen down the line, and that's how you know your impact and what you did makes a difference.
Boys and girls, this was the moment that we've been waiting for to honor you today for all you've done for us. Congratulations, Ginny.
Ms. McGraw, you can, and the board members, we have to take a picture, everybody. Also, the board members.
Thank you very much.
Mrs. McGraw, do you want to take a picture with your family who's here?
Well deserved.
Do you guys want to come out for a photo?
Blood family and extended family.
I'm like Kim K right now.
I want my family. My work family.
So fill our left side and the right side. Okay? Let's make a second row in the back. Just see if you're tall. If you're tall, you should be in the back. Everybody shift over just a little bit this way. Perfect, tippy toe. Now, if you see somebody's head, all right, then you know you might have to adjust your stomach, right? Okay. Yes. So you've got to lean forward a little bit. Yeah. If you're in the front, you can bend your knees for 10 seconds, 15. Or have you bend your knees? Okay? Bend your knees a little bit. Keep your eyes open, don't close your eyes. Okay? Scoot in a little bit, okay? That should be good. All right. Sorry. Big smiles, big smiles, eyes open. One, two, three. Congratulations. Congratulations.
Yep, yep. I think I speak for everyone, just so well deserved.
Thank you. Well, do I, can I speak now?
Well, if you must. Speak now or you can wait till we all speak, whatever you prefer.
I'm speechless. I really am speechless.
Well, you know what? Just think about it for a little bit.
Okay.
So we have somebody else that we're going to recognize.
Oh, gosh.
Ms. Abel. So on behalf of the Board of Education, I would also like to make a special presentation to Board Member Jennifer Abel. Ms. Abel closes a chapter in her life this evening and leaves behind a legacy of important work as a Board of Education member. For those of you here this afternoon and following along with the live broadcast, there's something unique about Ms. Abel and her commitment to Charles County Public Schools. Ms. Abel is the longest-serving member of the Board of Education in recent history. She was first appointed to the Board of Education in 2004 to finish the second half of a four-year term left vacant. She then ran for reelection in 2006, 2010, 2014, and 2018, winning easily in all those races, I might add. Throughout her tenure on the Board, Ms. Abel has served terms as its Vice Chairperson and on several subcommittees. She is well-known among her colleagues for her steadfast commitment to education and for always supporting her fellow colleagues, no matter the policy, issue, decision, or topic at hand. Ms. Abel is a proud representative of Charles County and a longtime community member. If you're not aware, Ms. Abel had four children go through each level of school in Charles County, elementary, middle, and high. She represents parental involvement, community engagement, and governance. I know my colleagues with us this afternoon will agree that Ms. Abel leaves the Board of Education with a vast history of service of which she can be extremely proud. Her passion for doing what is in the best interest of children will forever be remembered. On that note, I'd like to share another fact about Ms. Abel. She herself is a Charles County Public Schools graduate. Ms. Abel is a proud graduate of Thomas Stone High School. Go Cougars! To recognize her for her longtime service to the Board, could not think of a presentation or visual recognition more fitting than a varsity letter from Thomas Stone High School. So Ms. Abel, we have for you today, on behalf of the Board, a special recognition of your 18 years of service to Charles County Public Schools. You have lettered in being a school Board Member. This recognition represents your time in the Board with memorabilia from each of the superintendents under which you served. Congratulations, Ms. Abel. You and the commitment you've shown to education will be missed. And on a personal note, I remember when I first met Ms. Abel, I think it was like 2003, two, her youngest child in tow, she was at the J.C.'s doing a March of Dimes presentation. So that was almost 20 years ago. And she has certainly served the Board well, and no one has been more steadfast in their commitment and in their beliefs. So on behalf of the Board, I just want to say thank you very much.
It only took me to 54 to earn a varsity letter.
When everybody might, sure, sure.
You have to wear the jacket now. We have to buy you the jacket.
We good? Family?
Family.
Yes.
Your flash wasn't going off.
By the way, that's mom, daughter, sister, grandmom. Okay. We're still not done. So now we have some time, and thank you very much. Are we doing this now or after everybody speaks?
I think maybe we do it now first and then everybody speaks, Mr. Lucas, if that's okay?
Sure.
We just, we have a sequence of gifts. And then, yep.
Okay.
Yep. So we're going to do the cutting boards first, and then we'll bring those out later. So don't worry about those.
Oh, the cutting board, they're over there?
Yeah. Mr. Hancock and I got that piece.
Oh.
Not yet, Mr. Hancock. We've got to read this first. We may or may not have practiced it.
Yeah, sure. No, everything is right. I just don't know how to follow a script. So, so some students, boy, Thomas Stone High School again. So for our departing Board members, students at Thomas Stone High School worked with staff to create special parting gifts for Ms. Abel, Ms. Battle Lockhart, Mrs. Brown, Ms. McGraw, and Ms. Wilson. The students in Andrew McClelland's Foundation of Technology class at Thomas Stone custom-designed and engraved cutting boards as part of a... Oh, Boards for the Board project, huh? You got that? Got it? Mr. McClelland handpicked five students to take part in this project. The students who assisted with this special project are seniors Zach Miller and juniors Nyla DeLuca-Thomas, Jada Collins, Chase Rutledge, and Taylor Dickerson. The students were chosen for their work ethic and high-level performance in class. Mr. McClelland and the students are just a few examples of the talented and hard-working people who make up Charles County Public Schools. Thank you for devoting your time as a Board Member to ensure that all students have access to a high-quality education and an engaging learning experience. So thank you all.
So if we could ask all the Board Members again to come forward, our outgoing Board Members, and then we, Mr. Hancock and I, will pass out the cutting boards, and they're customized to each of you. Giving you last steps.
Yeah.
I'll wait for her to... Take it to him now.
Yes, because we have to take a picture with them.
Ms. Abel, congratulations. Ms. Wilson, you're very welcome. Battle Lockhart. Battle Lockhart, you're very welcome.
They're very nice.
They are nice. That is really nice. Best moments.
We're going to ask you to put your boards right on top of your name, and then we have one more. Please help you carry them to the car this afternoon. A new car. And if the Board Members could all go in as well, this is our official certificate for all of our outgoing Board Members. If the new, if the existing Board Members could also stay, and we'll take a full picture.
Okay. So I asked the Board Members to, during Board Correspondence, I know they wanted to say some more, but I said, hey, hold off because we're going to have some time later in the board meeting. And so now we've reached that time. It's certainly been an amazing four years for a lot of reasons, so we'll start. I have an order. So you're not leaving, Mr. Hancock, but any reflections? Anything you want to say?
Definitely.
I'm kind of going in order of seniority or years of service, rather, on the Board.
I didn't prepare anything, and I thought about it, but I, sometimes it's better to speak from the heart. And four years has gone by quick. It really has gone by quick, and we've been through a lot together. Four years ago, who would have known that a global pandemic would disrupt everything? And every goal and every plan we had was put on the back burner overnight, it feels like. And that kind of was a major part of our term. And looking back on the things that we did and how we did it, we, it wasn't always perfect. We did the best we could with the information we had and did it for the good of the school system. And I'm proud to have gone through that with all of you. And it's been an absolute honor and an absolute privilege to serve with each and every student Board Member, even though you're staying. It's been an honor to serve with you as well. But you guys are like family to me. You know, four years ago, I kind of knew you all, and we've been through a lot, and you all will be very missed. I'm sure we're going to have a great Board coming on, but they've got really big shoes to fill, and I will miss every last one of you, and I love every last one of you. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Hancock. Ms. Brown.
Dave is going to go make me get all weepy. But, you know, I have to, everything he said was just so true. I really enjoyed being on this Board. We may not have always agreed, but we operated with civility. And that was one thing I'm proud of, that we could sit down and discuss things and agree to disagree, but come to conclusions. And I believe everybody on this Board was out there without an agenda but for, to do the, to do the best thing they could for the children of Charles County. And that's what's important, that you have Board Members that really want to work for all of the children in the county and serve them. I was disappointed that two of those years we got wrapped up with COVID. That was no fun because that really kept you from being able to go out into the schools and do things, some of the things, and see the activities that you wanted to see because we were all in masks and only a certain amount of people allowed. So that part I did miss, but everything else was really just, just wonderful, just, just seeing parents come out, advocate for their kids, and community. And like I had said earlier to the new Board, please take advantage of those activities that the kids are doing after school, and you will not regret it because there are so many good things going on in Charles County that a lot of people don't even take advantage of, don't even know about. But once you start going... But once you start going, you'll find out that how rewarding it is to see what the kids in Charles County are doing. So, thank you for my time on this board.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. Ms. Wilson?
Oh, my goodness. A family member said to me, boy, did you pick an interesting time to be on a school board. And I shared with my family member, what you don't understand is the dedicated professionals that I've had the privilege and the honor to work with. Dr. Kimberly Hill, past superintendent, and now Dr. Maria Navarro. The executive staff has been absolutely amazing and supportive. And to the many educators and support staff out there working so hard and so committed. And a lot gets thrown at them, but they make it happen. And they make educational experiences for our children truly amazing, no matter what is thrown at them. So, you know, a lot of times, we talk about, oh, the challenges as board members that we have faced. But I look around this room and I look at the dedicated professionals. That's what keeps me motivated. You've guided us and you, you never quit. And I am thankful and appreciative to have had this honor to serve children in this capacity. I'm thankful for the board that I have served with. We, I've developed deep relationships, friendships, that I know that's going to be lasting. And I certainly wish nothing but the very, very best to the incoming board. And I hope and I pray that the commitment to educational excellence will continue and you will not fail as long as you continue to let them guide you. They are not gonna steer you wrong. They have the utmost commitment to children as well. So, I am thankful and blessed to have had this opportunity. So, I look forward to finding the next chapter in my life and how I will continue to support education. I am thankful and blessed to have known you all. Thank you again.
Ms. Bada Lockhart?
Oh, wow. Y'all know I'm emotional. And trying not to do this all day, but first and foremost, I would like to thank the public constituents that put me in this seat, as well as those that didn't want me to be in this seat. I hope I've proven you and shown you what I'm capable of doing on my journey of being in this seat. Thank you for the teachers, for allowing me to create safe spaces for you to be honest about your journey, so I can support you in being vocal about your needs. The students, we always talk about, we're here for the students, but my goal was to be here for you, because as long as we're here, somebody's here for you, you're definitely gonna take care of kids, especially mine that's still in the system. So I appreciate you for trusting me on this journey. And, you know, I'm gonna love on the students here regardless, every day, all day. I just pray and trust that the new board will understand the needs of the staff members, the teachers, just as much as you understand the needs of the students. Holistically, they all need you. They all need you to understand and hear what they have to say, whether you can make a change with it or not. I think it's just all about having the ear and allowing them a space to be able to be open about their experience and not judge or retaliate against what they have to say. I'm not going anywhere, as you guys know. I'm gonna continue to support in areas where I can, because I want my county that I live in to show and be a success and be an example to other counties. And if that requires me to continue to pour into Dr. Navarro and her staff, I will do so. But I have enjoyed this journey, every last bit of it. I've learned so much. I've been able to teach people myself on this journey. I started out in the campaign process where people doubted me, because, you know, they, they thought you had to have certain things to be able to be in this seat. But I'm so excited to be that little girl from the projects that grew up with nothing on welfare to sit in this chair, to be an example to kids. Anything is possible. Thank you for the opportunity.
Mrs. McGraw?
I'm still speechless. You know I have prepared remarks, but they have nothing to do with what happened today. You really have taken me by surprise. I really never, in my wildest dreams, ever expected to be honored by receiving Mr. Richmond's Leadership Award. Never. So I want to thank you all very much for this honor, because it truly is an honor. And to all my family and friends that are out here, thank you very much for all your kindness and support throughout the years. You truly have been family. Let me get back to that. I am very grateful to the citizens of Charles County for allowing me to represent them for the last eight years. Just as I looked through my career, I knew that I wasn't done. So I was fortunate that the Charles County citizens gave me this opportunity to be a member of the board. But it's been an interesting journey of highs and lows, compromises and concessions. Many times, we all had the same goal in mind, but we had different mindsets about how we were gonna get there. But as my fellow colleagues have said already, one thing that we always did was, in the face of the public, respect one another and were civil to one another. We may have disagreed behind closed doors, but that's part of the process as well. So, I am very fortunate to have worked with one of the best school boards across the state. And I can say that because I've had the opportunity to interact with other boards across the state. And I've also been fortunate to encounter many dedicated individuals, like those individuals that work here in, at Starkey and throughout the county and the schools. I can't say enough about how very talented and professional each and every one of you have been. I've visited every school and have attended or participated in hundreds of activities at the elementary, middle, and high school level. And I have to say, I have loved every minute of it. Much to the detriment probably of my family a lot, because I was off somewhere, but I just enjoy seeing the children be at their best and perform. In my final remarks when I was leaving Mabe, and I want to reiterate them, I said that as a school board member for eight years, I've learned, just as many of my colleagues have, that it takes courage to persevere in making policy changes that are in the best interest of children. It takes courage to be visible in the community and interact with constituents about controversial topics. And it takes courage to have those uncomfortable conversations with our government officials to gain their support for whatever our plans or strategic programs were and our visions and our budgets. So it's our everyday challenge, and I would say this to our new board members, to help people to understand that the decisions we're making affect the children today, tomorrow, and for many years to come. Our focus should be on student achievement, and we have to never, ever waver from that. I believe that despite the pressures that can sometimes override what we're trying to do, we have to keep focused on student achievement and what's best for them. My only hope has been that my presence has made a difference in the lives of our students, our staff, and the families of Charles County. And for me, this has been a journey of a lifetime. And thank you all very much for allowing me to be part of this board and to be honored in this way today. You just can't imagine how I feel right now. Thank you all very much.
So I'd just like to thank, thank my family and thank for the public, you know, the ones that have put me in this position. And, you know, it takes time. So when you, when you spend time doing this, you're taking time away from something else. But it's, it's so vitally important. And the same word that I've used over and over again, and that word is opportunity. That, that's the reason I'm here. I want to give opportunity to kids that, that, looking back on my life, that I never had. And you've heard a lot of passionate and real stories from other board members. And, and it's true what they said about all of us working together. You know, there are countless examples of other groups that, that in, in public don't do that very well. And it's an extremely bad example to set. And as for the staff in this, in Charles County Public Schools, and again, I've said this, I've never seen a more dedicated and professional group of people. You know, I traveled a lot and interacted with a lot of big companies. And, and, you know, they do a lot of stuff for show, but, but the people here, I mean, they do it because it's their calling, and it's, it's what they want to do. It's where they want to be. And they're doing it for the kids. And as Mrs. McGraw said, you have to think what's in the best interest of the students. And a lot of time, that means, as, as Ms. Bada Lockhart said, think about staff and what they're doing and, and how you can help them, because when you help them, you do help the students. But it's all about giving opportunity to the students. And I look forward to working with all the new board members. You're, you're full of energy and have a lot of ideas, and I embrace that and I appreciate that. And I just look forward to working with you. And again, I just want to thank my fellow board members. It's been, it's been a fantastic experience, and I wouldn't trade it for anything. So thank you very much.
Ms. Abel?
We're going in order.
I'm not much for public speaking. Even in this position. I never considered myself a politician, even still don't. I never really played by the rules, always was considered the rebel. I answered an ad in the newspaper eighteen years ago to sit on this board, to fill a vacancy. Never, ever, in my wildest dreams, thinking that I would get it. I never even told my family I was considering it or anything about it until after I got the phone call on the soccer field saying that I had been appointed. And I will be forever grateful for that, for that first opportunity. Because if it had not been for that first appointment, I never would have ran. I never would have gotten involved. And I did it because I wanted to give parents and students a voice. And then after I got in it, I found out I could be the voice for teachers as well and for the general community. So I just want to take a minute to say thank you to my family. All my four kids were little back then. I missed quite a few events, quite a few school ceremonies and awards. Mom took care of the kids when they were little, so I could attend the board meetings. And I want to thank them for always being there. I want to thank the staff for always putting up with my insane questions and crazy ideas and always bringing it back down to earth. And no matter how many times I asked the same question over the eighteen years, answering patiently. I want to thank the community for the confidence and support that you've given me through the last eighteen years. It has truly been my honor and privilege to serve in this capacity. And I thank you for allowing me to do this. To the staff here, I admire your dedication and commitment to the students of Charles County. You have become family to me, and I will genuinely miss working with each and every one of you. To my current board members, you have truly been the most cohesive, thoughtful, non-tumultuous boards I have worked with in my tenure. And there was five. We successfully navigated and survived the pandemic, the hiring of a new superintendent, and we came out of it still friends. We did not always agree on everything, as everyone has alluded, but we did so respectfully and appropriately with civility. To the incoming board, I encourage you to slow down, listen, listen to the staff and the community you represent. Respect one another's opinions and perspectives. Make the best decision for all students. You are now responsible for twenty-seven thousand plus. And the staff, don't forget the staff. Make the best decisions for them as well. Come home knowing you made the decision that you made because you thought it was the best decision. You will not please everybody. There is no way. You will come home with fifty percent of the community upset with whatever decision you make. Grow some thick skin and go to bed at night knowing that you are doing your very best. I wish you all the best. With that, I'm not going to say goodbye, because I will be around, watching, listening, and helping where I can. So it's not a goodbye, but more of a see you later. And with that, Dr. Seuss has a quote that says, "Don't cry because it's over, smile because it happened." And I am smiling over the last eighteen years.
I can't think of a better way to finish off on that. Thank you very much, Ms. Abel. So we got some folks in the back standing, we can take a minute. We've got some recognitions for, for some students and some staff. So if you were here for Ms. McGraw and Ms. Abel, you know, it'd be a good time. You can, you can step out now. And we'll just take a couple minutes to switch, switch things around a little bit. Okay, welcome back, everybody. We're gonna move into the part of our program now that we truly appreciate, where we get to recognize some outstanding young people. Good afternoon, ladies. Dr. Gill?
Good afternoon, Board Chairman Lucas, board members, Dr. Navarro and staff. Today, it is my honor to turn the spotlight on to several Charles County Public School students who've been identified by their school principals as exemplary student models in the areas of academic achievement, personal responsibility, and career readiness. Students being recognized this afternoon are Olivia Bellamy, eighth grader from Matthew Henson Middle School; Brianna King, fifth grader from Daniel of St. Thomas Jennifer Elementary School; Aubriana Mack, fifth grader from Dr. Samuel A. Mudd Elementary School; and Seda Elgamar, fifth grader from William B. Wade Elementary School. These outstanding students will be recognized by their school leaders in this order. Christina Cavalero, principal from Matthew Henson Middle School; Kevin Jackson Senior, principal from Daniel St. Thomas Jennifer Elementary School; Shella Soderstrom, assistant principal of Dr. Samuel Mudd Elementary School; and William Miller, principal of William B. Wade Elementary School. Ms. Cavalero?
Good evening. Olivia Bellamy is an eighth grade student at Matthew Henson Middle School and is being recognized...
and is being recognized in the area of academic achievement. Throughout Olivia's middle school experience, she has maintained an exceptional 4.0 grade point average. Olivia has mastered her content and maintained a high level of excellence with her strong work ethic and diligence. In addition to her outstanding grades, Olivia participates on the Henson archery team. She is a valued member of the Henson Mesa Team and the National Junior Honor Society. Outside of school, Olivia is actively involved in karate and is an avid reader. Upon graduation from high school, Olivia plans to pursue a medical degree from Stanford to become a family doctor. Henson is so proud of Olivia and her accomplishments and looks forward to watching and cheering on her bright future. Congratulations, Olivia.
Archery, karate, and Dr. Bellamy. All right. Mr. Jackson, principal from Jennifer Elementary School. Mr. Jackson?
Good evening. Brianna King is a fifth grade student at Daniel of St. Thomas Jennifer Elementary School who is being recognized for personal responsibility. Ms. Carolyn Correll, fifth grade teacher at Jennifer Elementary School, shared the following. Brianna King is a leader in our classroom. She strives each and every day to do her very best on all of her assignments. She provides assistance to those students that are having difficulty, and Brianna asks and answers questions during instruction to ensure she is learning the skills being taught. She consistently meets the expectations of the fifth grade Jennifer Elementary School. At Jennifer, Brianna is an excellent representative of the Jennifer Team Mission Possible spirit. Brianna always puts on her shine every single day at Jennifer. She is scholarly as she puts her best foot forward toward learning. Brianna demonstrates honor and respect to her teachers and peers. She maintains a great sense of pride or a great sense of integrity in how she conducts herself at school, and she never gives up and strives her best to be an excellent representative of her family. Brianna is empathetic by putting herself in the place of classmates when they need help. Above all, she embraces responsibility for her learning and works hard to achieve greatness. Brianna was on the fourth grade math team last year and participated as a big buddy to other students. Brianna this year participates in the fifth grade chorus. Her parents have shared that Brianna isn't overachiever. She leads by example, she excels in all areas, and at an early age, she displayed this thorough and characteristic manner, and she has compassion for others and loves to help people, especially those younger than her. In her community, she is a role model to the younger students. Outside of school, she belongs to, of course, her home, her church family, as well as a sports family. She takes care of her seven-year-old brother, helping him read and teaching him new things. She is a member of the ACV Action Chapel Virginia Youth Ministry, and she is extremely helpful with the youth, according to her pastor. She plays softball for Southern Maryland Youth Organization, wherein her first year playing softball, she was chosen to play with eleven-to-thirteen division as a ten-year-old. She plays basketball for Charles County Recreational. Her parents are very proud and blessed to have her as a daughter. So I present to you Brianna King, who is a gleaming example of personal responsibility for Jennifer Elementary School.
Next to the podium is assistant principal from Dr. Mudd Elementary School, Shella Soderstrom.
Good evening. This evening I am proud to present to you Aubriana Mack. Aubriana is a fifth grade student at Dr. Mudd Elementary School and is being recognized in the area of career readiness. Aubriana has been a student at Dr. Mudd Elementary since kindergarten. Aubriana is very dedicated and hardworking. She is always a role model, demonstrating personal responsibility of being respectful, responsible, and ready to learn. When talking with Aubriana's teachers, they share that Aubriana has a deep motivation and enthusiasm for learning, allowing her to excel in all areas. Aubriana shows initiative and looks for ways to get involved. Aubriana is a member of the Girls Who Code Club, Gaming Club, Math Team. She has been a member of the Destination Imagination Team since first grade and plans to continue this year and into the future. Aubriana also plays the flute. Her love for art and gaming has Aubriana wanting to pursue a career as an animator or a game designer. When Aubriana is not in school, she enjoys cooking with her mom, working on scratch, and doing her artwork. She also watches Darman YouTube videos with amusing and inspirational messages. Aubriana believes in setting an example for other students to follow by working to the best of her ability each and every day. She has a goal, and she strives to achieve it. Ladies and gentlemen, I present to you Ms. Aubriana
And finally, principal from William B. Wade Elementary School, William Miller.
Seda Algmar is a fifth grade student at William B. Wade Elementary School and is being recognized in the area of academic success. She has been a proud Wildcat since she transferred to our school in second grade. If you talk to any one of her teachers, they'll say she is a very dedicated and hardworking student. She'll do anything for anyone at any time. She's the kind of student that puts forth one hundred percent of herself into any project that she takes on and is not satisfied till it's done to the best of her abilities. Her fourth grade teacher, Ms. Brock, talked about her, said she's an amazing student. She sets an example for her peers. Her positive attitude, motivation, and behavior are inspirational for all that are around her. I truly appreciate her for enthusiasm she puts into learning throughout the year and for her leadership that she shows throughout the year. She is the kind of student leader that any teacher would love to have in their class. Ms. Lancaster, her fifth grade teacher, describes her as a polite, respectful, and hardworking student. She works conscientiously and diligently and always strives to do her best. She is always eager to learn and has excellent participation in class. She's very responsible and consistently puts forth her best effort to succeed academically. She is a true leader and role model for her peers and community. She's considering pursuing a career in the medical field and wants to be a dentist. When I asked her why she was pursuing this career choice, she just responded, "I really want to help people with their oral health." Judging by her wonderful smile that you can see right now, and I get to see it every day, thankfully, she's an excellent role model for that healthy smile. She has a great perspective on school. When we were talking, she said she loves being a Wildcat because she likes learning new things. It challenges me to do better. The teachers are great and very helpful, too. Whatever she decides to do as she progresses through school, I know her family and society will benefit from her hard work and dedication to improve herself and others. When she's not impressing everyone with her academic abilities or award-winning personality, you may hear her playing the viola, working with the math team, playing chess, or find her around the school just being an active safety patrol member. Outside of school, she enjoys just hanging out at home with her family. She said, "I love it when my sister and my mom give me equations to solve." I didn't know what to say about that. It challenges my brain to keep me thinking. Even my little sister will give me a problem on the calculator to solve. When she's not solving math equations, she enjoys watching TV, playing board games, and drawing. I'm
Well, I'm not sure how they found time to even be here tonight. Mr. Lucas?
Every month I say the same thing, only because it's true. I agree with you, Dr. Gill. When I was that age, I know I wasn't doing all that. Very impressive. Young ladies, you ought to be very proud of what you've accomplished so far, and I have no doubt you will continue to do so. Olivia, 4.0 GPA, pretty good. Wow, thank you. And you're on the archery team, and you did Mesa and National Junior Honor Society. And you do karate. How long have you been doing that?
Eight years.
Eight years, wow. So what belt are you?
Third-degree black belt.
Wow, okay. I'll know not to mess with you. Third-degree black belt, in case you didn't hear that, folks. So one thing I know is that takes, one thing that takes is dedication and persistence. And they just don't hand those out like candy. So very, very good on you. And you want to go to Stanford, and you want to be a doctor. What kind of doctor do you know?
Family physician.
Very good. You've got your act together. That's very apparent. So congratulations on your accomplishments, and look forward to what you do in the rest of your career as a Charles County student. Thank you. Brianna, how are you?
Good.
Thank you for being here today. You know, I take little notes when your principals are reading, and I kept hearing honor and respect when they referred to you. And that's such an important thing for anyone to have, and especially a young person. And you help your classmates, you never give up, you're a big buddy to other students and that, and you lead by example. That's another thing that I wrote. And you like to read to your brother? How old's your brother?
Seven.
Wow. So what kind of books do you like to read? Just anything?
Mystery books.
Mystery books, wow. Nice. That gets your brain going a little bit, too. That's awesome. And outside, you're very active with your church, which is great, and you like to play softball?
Yes.
Awesome. What position?
Catcher.
Wow. Even better. That's not too many kids. Often, they don't want to play catcher. So good on you. Well, thank you. And again, yeah, Mr. Hancock's son likes to play baseball. So very good. Thank you so much. And again, look forward to what you're going to accomplish in the future.
Thank you.
Aubriana, how are you?
Good.
Excellent, excellent. So, you know, with you two, I heard the word role model, and that's such high praise for anyone. And again, be very proud of the fact that people refer to you that way. That's a very good accomplishment. And I like watching Darman YouTube videos, too. By the way, and you're involved in Destination Imagination, DI. That's a program near and dear to my heart. And you like gaming and coding, huh?
Yeah.
Very good. You play a lot of online games? What's your favorite games to play?
I don't really like to make games. No, sorry. I don't really like to play games. I like to make games.
Okay. Probably a better deal. If you look about the time and the reward for your time, it's going to serve you better to make those rather than just sit around all day and play. That's awesome. And you play the flute, so you're musically inclined. I hope you continue to do that as you progress through schooling and into high school. So that's awesome. Again, congratulations, and look forward to seeing what's going to happen with you in the future. And Seda, how are you?
Good.
Awesome. Dedicated, hardworking, and again, leadership and role model, role model. You know, that's not said about every student. And again, I just, I can't emphasize that enough, you know? Be an example for others to follow. You should be very proud of that. And your principal, Mr. Miller, said that your parents give you the equations, so it challenges your brain. Awesome. I like that. You're eager to learn, and you're on the chess, you on the chess team or just like playing chess?
Like playing chess.
Like playing chess, awesome. And you play the viola as well, right? So you're doing everything very well, and you ought to be very proud of what you've accomplished. So we got to hear so many great things about you and what you've done, but now you get an opportunity, if you wish, to speak a little bit. So we'll start down here with Olivia. Is there anything you'd like to say?
I'd just like to say thank you to the teachers and staff for really helping with making learning very fun and enjoyable, but also like very important at the same time. And also thank you to my parents for help push me in succeeding in my goals academically and just any other all that happened in life.
Wow, well said. Thank you. Brianna?
I'd like to say thank you to my principals and my teachers for helping me and getting me here right now. I'd like to say thank you to my parents, because they taught me everything that I know. They taught me my behavior, and they also taught me how to read and how to do math, so.
Very good. Thank you so much. And Aubriana?
I would like to thank my principal and teacher for nominating me and recognizing me. And I would like to thank my parents and families, family members, for supporting me and getting me all the way here.
Seda?
Good evening. My name is Seda, and I am glad to be chosen Student of the Year at William B. Wade Elementary School. William B. Wade is an amazing school, and I am proud to be a Wade Wildcat. At Wade, our principal, Mr. Miller, is the best principal you can all ask for. Our teachers at Wade are the most kind, and ever since I came here at Wade in the second grade, they have always treated me with respect. I want to thank all my classmates at Wade that made me feel like family. I am glad to be here and having this opportunity. I have always set high expectations for myself, and I am proud that I met one of them today. I am happy that I am representing my school.
She used to be a principal of Wade Elementary School, too. All right. Well, congratulations. And, you know, I heard a common theme all the way down the line about your parents and how they support you and set high goals for you. So thank you, parents, very much for doing that. And now, we've got a few little gifts we're going to give to you, and we're going to
With me? Who, which one? On the last one? That was Tina.
Tina, you need to re-present, she had her mask on. Isn't it funny, two years ago, we were all wearing masks for the pictures? Oh, no mask.
Take your certificate. You just stand in order. And we're going to get the same order that you were sitting in. So Seda will go to the end.
Have them move down.
Slide to the right. Olivia, can you fold your top part down?
Yeah.
Perfect. And then hold it in front of your belly button.
It's amazing, and they're so composed.
Good evening, Chairperson Lucas, Superintendent Dr. Navarro, board members, executive staff, colleagues, friends and family. My name is David Shimizu from the Office of Human Resources. And today, we will be acknowledging five exemplary employees. Our first recipient is Ms. Lori Silk, a student data technician from Robert D. Steatham Education Center, presented by Principal Lou Di Ambrosio. Good evening, I'm Lou Di Ambrosio, Principal of Alternative Programs at the Robert D. Steatham Educational Center. And it is my honor and privilege to introduce you to Mrs. Lori Silk, student data technician and our school's exemplary employee. Mrs. Silk is no stranger to the Exemplary Employee Award, as this is her second time receiving it. However, at a different school level and position. In 2010, Mrs. Silk was the exemplary employee for Mary B. Neal Elementary School as the Registration Secretary. Mrs. Silk also has received a previous award for Minority Achievement. Lori began her career with Charles County Public Schools in the 2001-2002 school year, same as me. And then took her ti, took some time away, but sobbed off and on, until the opening of Neal Elementary School. Mrs. Silk is a consummate, no-nonsense professional who annually achieves highly effective ratings. Mrs. Silk was not always an outstanding secretary and student data technician. In her previous career as the Head of Accounts Payable with Wykert Real Estate in New Jersey, the president of Wykert Real Estate, James Wykert, told Mrs. Silk that he believes her motto is "Just Do It." "I certainly do not have the real estate acumen like James Wykert, but I can easily understand why you would say that." Mrs. Silk is no-nonsense, get-to-the-point, get-it-done, just-do-it employee. She has a sign on her desk that she received from a colleague, Mr. Gammons. The sign reads, "I'm actually not funny, I'm just mean and people think I'm funny." This was one of the first things I noticed when I went into her office area, when I met her back in August. I quickly learned why Mrs. Silk does not have time to play. Anytime a student matriculates to the Steatham Center, Mrs. Silk inputs all that student's data into our synergy system, adjusts their graduation profile, double-checks their credits with current and future classes to ensure that all students are on track to reach graduation. This is for all students across the four Robert D. Steatham Education Center programs, so that's over 630 students at this point this school year. Mrs. Silk is the data tech extraordinaire running daily attendance, behavior, and other compliance reports for all departments. When the nomination committee sent her name forward, she was voted to receive this award from our staff and students, hands down. Mrs. Silk does not like the spotlight. But the staff at the Steatham Center, and I agree that she is our exemplary employee because she gets the job done, done well, and is so funny. As appreciative as we are here at Robert D. Steatham for Mrs. Silk and her exemplary work, it pales in comparison to her most important job as a wife, mother, and grandmother. Mrs. Silk has been married for 32 years, and she told me, he's still alive. And she has three children, all who work or worked for Charles County Public Schools. Both of her sons, I had the privilege of working with before working with her as computer analysts at Arthur Middleton Elementary School. And her daughter is currently an employee at Wade Elementary School. The Steatham Center is proud to recognize Ms. Lori Silk as our 22-23 exemplary employee. And I look forward to continuing to work with her. Congratulations, Mrs. Silk. Our next exemplary employee, our next exemplary employee is Ms. Alexandria Bumm, a learning resource teacher at Matthew Henson Middle School, presented by Principal Christina Caballero.
I'm going to try to keep a straight face with her by my side. It's a little hard. It's my pleasure to introduce you to Ms. Bumm as our Henson's exemplary employee. Ms. Bumm started her career in Charles County in 2006. She was an eighth-grade science teacher at Milton Summers Middle School. While at Summers, Ms. Bumm was what you would consider an active participant in teaching and learning. She was the Science Department Chairperson, organized a science fair, was a part of PBIS, Mesa Chess Club, and Girls Who Code organization. She also participated in writing county and state curriculum, writing state assessments, range finding, as well as participated in the MEGS Conference. Ms. Bumm was hired by the central office to begin her work as our Learning Resource Teacher in November of last year. Not really knowing her pathway in Charles County, anytime somebody is hired on our behalf, we're always a little skeptical. Well, as I've said many times before, whoever made the decision to assign her in the instructional leadership capacity at Henson, thank you, thank you, thank you. Now, I know you don't like the spotlight, so I'm not going to talk about the cookie bars that you organize, or you being a cricket ninja. But Ms. Bumm has become the testing coordinator extraordinaire. If you think you know someone who is organized, I can guarantee you that Ms. Bumm has them beat. Her office and the work she does is in a work of creative, colorful art. If she is out of the building, she can pinpoint where something can be located in her office in an instant. She has created and executed an excellent testing schedule, communicates regularly and often with staff, students, and parents. Additionally, she provides services to our gifted education students and advocates for their enrichment opportunities. Ms. Bumm has taken the lead with me on Henson's professional learning team, and we're excited to actually host the group tomorrow. Her organization and tech-savvy ways have helped the process for teachers to have information at their fingertips. If I ask her to do something, the answer is never no. If I ask her for a suggestion, she gives me honest feedback. If I have a vision, because I'm not creative, she brings it to life. She is a true team player for all of us who work at Matthew Henson. For these reasons and many more, we recognize Ms. Bumm as an asset to our community. Congratulations.
Our next exemplary employee is Ms. Deidra Fuller, Secretary to the Principal from Daniel of St. Thomas Jennifer Elementary School. Ms. Fuller is not able to join us tonight. Principal Kevin Jackson Jr. will accept Ms. Fuller's award and resolution on her behalf.
Good afternoon, once again. So I, on behalf of Ms. Fuller, due to a family situation, she could not be here today. But I do want you to know, anybody who knows anything about Jennifer Elementary School, you know that Deidra Fuller is everything that that school embodies. And this actually would be her second time receiving this award. She is absolutely extraordinary. So, Jennifer Elementary School presents Deidra Fuller, who is the Secretary to the Principal, as a deserving staff member to be recognized for excellence in our school. Ms. Fuller is one of the longest-working employees at Jennifer, and she has supported at least five principals and an even larger number of assistant principals. She has established a legacy of excellence, and that is no lie. She is excellent in all she does as a Secretary to the Principal. She does her best to represent her principals in the best manner possible, as well as the school. Ms. Fuller is professional in her demeanor and offers solutions to many challenges that arise. Our staff always has confidence that she will get you what you need, and she will most likely know what to do in terms of a routine or procedure. Ms. Fuller is always embracing any new procedures related to her role, such as now being a Title I school at Jennifer. Ms. Fuller has worked hard to learn all routines and procedures related to the ins and outs of being a Title I school. She actively seeks out other secretaries and other individuals in this area who have demonstrated success. She wants to get it, she wants to be perfect in everything that she does. Ms. Fuller and other places has also expressed interest in getting herself and others in the office additional training that are pertinent to their roles. She's always advocating for her colleagues. Her work ethic demonstrates her desire to make Jennifer Elementary School the best for students and staff. She works hard to make everyone feel appreciated. And on behalf of the principal, she anticipates special recognitions for various employees. And many times, she will bring to me an issue or something where we have to acknowledge someone in a very quick manner, and she's already thought it out, which I always appreciate. She arranges for the employees to have floral or edible arrangements, special tokens as gifts, or cards from the administration to provide to community members. She consistently anticipates what the staff and the administration needs, many times before it is even thought about. Ms. Fuller does her work, and it is akin to the job of the Secretary to the Principal. And she does everything that's related to that, such as budgeting. And again, Title I needs, as well as taking care of funds related to board-based and student activity fund. She goes above and beyond in this role. She is meticulous in her record-keeping and thorough in meeting necessary deadlines. Ms. Fuller assures that resources for staff are available. She orders materials of instruction for the entire staff and assures the office and school have an adequate supply of everything that we need to have in order to run. She also takes on coordinating food and supplies for Jennifer's special activities. And she does that with great pride, and does that with an attitude of excellence and expectancy. Without Ms. Fuller, Jennifer Elementary School would not be known as Team Mission Possible. We are grateful that she helps all of our Jennifer stars to shine in a magnificent way. So, I know she's watching this at some point in time. So, Ms. Fuller, we thank you for your excellence.
Our next exemplary employee is Ms. Cassandra Ament, an instructional resource teacher from Dr. Samuel A. Mudd Elementary School, presented by Assistant Principal Shella Soderstrom.
This evening, I am proud to present to you Dr. Samuel A. Mudd Elementary School Exemplary Employee, Ms. Cassandra Ament, or as we affectionately call her, Casey. She exemplifies all the core values, beliefs, and qualities that we work to uphold at Dr. Mudd and in Charles County Public Schools. In her 21 years of service to Charles County, Casey has been a second, third, and fourth-grade teacher, a grade-level chair, a mentor teacher, an instructional coach, a Charles County Public Schools presenter locally, state, and nationally, a distinguished school presenter, and an instructional resource teacher. For the past seven years, Ms. Ament has served as our Math Instructional Resource Guru. In her current role, she shares her passion for math with our students and staff. She helps us create an environment at Dr. Mudd that brings math to life through her acts of service to others and by coaching and modeling math practices and strategies both inside and outside the classroom. A master teacher shares her knowledge with the broader learning community. Casey coordinates our Early Rise Tutoring Program, purposefully plans our Title I Family Math Night, and recognizes both students and staff for their Dream Box usage during our daily morning announcements. As a master teacher, she goes above and beyond to ensure a positive learning experience is provided for the students and staff we serve. Casey's impact resonates throughout our building. Ms. Ament was recently asked, "What are you most proud of in your work?" She simply stated, "Seeing our students' and colleagues' face and excitement when they do something they didn't think they could do." She makes herself available because she sees the big picture. Casey works diligently to ensure our teachers remain current on math pedagogy and practices. And in addition to coaching, co-teaching, and modeling lessons, Ms. Ament hosts relevant professional development opportunities before school, during school, and after school for teachers. Her goal is to personalize their learning to help them build their efficacy as a math practitioner. Ms. Melanie Butler, kindergarten teacher, shared, "Ms. Ament is an amazing resource for teachers and students, and willing to do anything possible to be a support or cheerleader." She does not hide behind her title or desk. On any given day, she can be found working with a small intervention group, helping with math groups, modeling a strategy in a classroom, studying students' work with grade-level teams, coming to school early, very early, to tutor students, or staying late to work with a struggling teacher. Casey gives so much of herself, and she never complains. She is often overheard many times throughout the day, asking, "How can I help you be successful?" To see her in action is to witness greatness in action. We are constant, we are in constant awe of her work ethic. She is a true definition of a servant leader. Servant leadership is a philosophy and a set of practices that enrich the lives of individuals, build better organizations, and ultimately create a more just and caring world. Each day, she comes to Dr. Mudd, ready to serve. Ladies and gentlemen, I present to you one of Charles County's master teachers, a teacher leader, and a math teacher extraordinaire, Ms. Casey Ament.
Our last exemplary employee is Ms. Charlene Woods, a third-grade teacher from William B. Wade Elementary School, represented by Principal William Miller.
Very proud to present Ms. Charlene Woods as exemplary employee at William B. Wade Elementary School. Ms. Woods began her teaching career in 2013 in Anne Aronnau County and came to William B. Wade in 2018, and has very successfully taught third and fifth grade since joining us at Wade. Thank you, Mr. Jackson, for this wonderful hire. Thank you, Mr. Jackson, for this wonderful hire. Uh, when you look at what makes a successful teacher in the classroom, the first question you have to ask yourself is, "What do the students think of them?" If you ask any one of her students she's taught in previous years, you're gonna hear things like, "Ms. Woods made learning fun." And being new to this school, "She made me feel good about being here." When I asked a couple of students that she's currently teaching how they feel about Ms. Woods, she's, the first child said, "She's awesome. She makes learning fun, takes the time to help us when we need it." Another student said, "She's amazing because she's always makes learning fun for us and makes us feel very special no matter what." As an administrator, what I appreciate most about Ms. Woods is her willingness to accept any challenge. Whether it's introducing a new strategy or enhancing an old one, she will always do what is best for the students at Wade. She is a quiet leader who puts the needs of her students first. She often gives up her own planning time just to meet with her students and build a stronger connection with them if they are struggling or not struggling in any way. Throughout her entire teaching career, she has been identified as the inclusion classroom teacher, and she loves to collaborate with the other teachers she works with. She enjoys figuring out each child's unique learning style and developing strategies to meet their individual needs. This challenges her to grow her knowledge and skills as a teacher, and if you ever visit her classroom, you would see that. Her cooperating special education teacher had this to say about her. "I've always been impressed with Charlene's dedication to her students. She understands the necessity that some students require modifications and accommodations so that her students can have success in the curriculum and level the playing field." Charlene has always taken the initiative to modify work to meet the students' needs where they are so they can have success. Ever since the pandemic, even our parents have needed more support and communication, and Charlene regularly communicates with them. I love working with Charlene as a co-teacher. I specifically request each year to be assigned to the grade level she teaches because we learn together. I'm very proud to honor Ms. Charlene Woods as our exemplary employee, new mother and wife, so, thank you, Ms. Woods.
Um, Ms. Silk?
Yes.
So, you opened, Neil? Did I hear that correctly?
Yes.
So, my son would have been there.
Yes.
Wow, okay, so... Yeah, I still talk to Ms. Levely every once in a while. That's awesome, and you are, um, highly effective in your job, which is something that everyone should aspire to do. No-nonsense, and I like this, uh, the way you were described, a data tech extraordinaire. I like that. That's kinda catchy, so... But I appreciate everything you do and, um, and working, um, with everyone in the school and with the families. It's so important. So, thank you very much, and congratulations on your accomplishments. Ms. Bum, how are you?
Good, yourself?
Okay. Now, we're gonna go down the line. So, you were at Summers? How long were you at Summers?
14 years.
Ooh, was my kid there when, when?
Yeah.
And, um...
Does anyone have these?
Yeah, yeah. So, um, uh, I've lost my train of thought here. So, here we go. So, uh, you take, I like this. You take a vision and you turn it into something that, that's real. And I can relate to that because I can think of a bunch of things, but I can never seem to, to articulate it into something tangible. And then you're a team player, and the fact that you created, like, I know it's a big deal, all these testing schedules and aligning the resources and, and have it be effective, that is a, as a kudos to your, your skill. So, thank you so much for doing that. Really appreciate it. Congratulations on your award. Ms. Ament, how are you?
Great, how are you?
Okay, I am fine. For the record, I don't think you worked at any school that my kid...
I don't think I have.
All right, well, um, now, you were, um, did I hear right? You, that you were a local, state, a national presenter? Wow.
Presented nationally on behalf of Charles County twice.
That is awesome. Congratulations. And again, a testament to your expertise and, and your, and your desire to do that. You're a master teacher, um, and I like this, um, phrase that your principal used. You said that you get excited when kids find out that they can do something they thought they couldn't do.
The best look on their faces.
There you go.
I love it.
That, that is awesome, and the fact that you come early and stay late, and, and the quote I wrote down, that people are in awe of your work ethic. Uh, we certainly need more, more folks like you and like the rest of you up here. So, thank you for everything. Really appreciate it. Go ahead, you wanna say something?
No, I just said you're welcome.
Okay, well, thank you. Appreciate that very much. Hi, Ms. Woods, how are you?
I'm fine, how are you?
Good, good. Um, and boy, did I hear a reoccurring theme. "You make learning fun. You make learning fun," from, from several kids. And, uh, so obviously, that's something that's real, and, and, you know, when a teacher can find the right combination of, of science, the science in teaching and the art in teaching to make that happen, then you've cracked the code, and, and you've obviously done that. And your kids say that you make them feel special. And boy, the fact that you give up your planning time to meet with kids, holy cow. That, I mean, no more testament of being dedicated to your job than that right there. And the fact that you go and you meet, you know, we, we always say this, but you meet students where they are. I mean, that's, that's real, and, and you're able to do that and, and come to their level and help them. So, I just wanna say thank you for doing that and congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. So, um, now it's time for you, if you wish, to, to share a few words. So, we'll start down here, uh, with Ms. Silk.
I just wanna thank my student family for my, for all their support and for this honor.
Thank you very much. No-nonsense, right there. Ms. Bum?
I just wanna thank Ms. Cavalero and the administration team. They've made this transition so seamless, and the culture and family there just has made it amazing to work there again.
Awesome. Thank you so much. Ms. Ament?
Uh, I write a lot of something. Al Bebrin. Distinguished board members, it's been a great honor to be chosen as Dr. Mudd's exemplary employee. The honor is greater still knowing that I was selected not only by, by my superiors, but also my colleagues. Through my 21 years, I've worked and I've learned from some extraordinary Charles County educators, and it's been my privilege to devote my career working at Charles County. Way back in 2002, when I started at James Creek Elementary School, which I did have hurt it. I was working for Penny Nye and now at Dr. Mudd under the valiant leadership of Ms. Watley. Throughout my career, I've experienced, as well as we all have, high points and low points, and through it all, I'm supported by my incredible family, celebrating the highs and, and navigating the lows. To my wonderful parents, Robert and Jeff, thanks for making sure my kids never had the hitchhike home. Well, except the one time, but... My beautiful children, Ethan and Ally, thank you for tolerating the early mornings and the late nights. And my doting husband, Doug, thank you for keeping me sane through it all. I'll never forget when we, when I was considering quitting altogether, and you said to me, "You can get another job, you can even make more money somewhere else, but you are, get to go to a place that you're doing what you love every day." That's just a fraction of the dedication that my family has shown me over the years. Their love and support is what keeps me going through the thick and thin, and I'm eternally grateful. Maya Angelou once said, "Family isn't always blood. It's people in your life who want to be in there, who you want to be in theirs." And when you get the position of the instructional resource teacher, you don't get to select your school like you do, um, if you're hired as a classroom teacher. And I was lucky enough to land right where I belong. Ms. Watley, Ms. Soderstrom, Ms. Patel, and Ms. Miller, and the rest of my Dr. Mudd family, there's always some challenge, whether it's a flood, substitute shortage, or a fox on the playground. We always see it through together. Twice. Whether or not I'm at home or I'm at work, I'm always surrounded by family. Thank you for this honor.
Thank you. Ms. Woods?
So, she should have gone last. Just kidding. I'm just very happy to have my love of education that came from my family, who have all been in education in some capacity. Um, and I think I'm just a reflection of the amazing leadership that I've had since I've been in this county from Kevin and Bill. I'm grateful most for having Bill's support and his trust in me to do what I feel and what I know is best for my kids. And I'm very grateful to be surrounded by the amazing team that I have in third grade and my special education co-teacher. Um, I'm just a reflection of all of them helping me collectively. So, I'm grateful for being in this county and at Wade, and I couldn't imagine being anywhere else.
We're grateful for you being here. Thank you. Okay, so now we have, um, a couple of gifts for you, and we're gonna take some pictures, so stand by. Think I have the one that's not here.
Thank you.
The vendor, we should stand up.
I know. Yeah.
Sometimes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you too.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, and thank you so much.
Oh, Ms. Silk knows what to do. I know, I just, I was all wrong. Only Tina and David together.
This is for you.
Man.
The paparazzi here, so just keep smiling for a little bit.
Okay, unless there's anything else, we're gonna go on a break till six o'clock. Okay, welcome back, everybody. It's that part of our agenda where we have public comment. Mr. Schwartz?
I will read the rules for public forum. Speakers should identify themselves, statements should be brief, to the point, and limited to three minutes or less. Board members should not be expected to respond or inform to statements made by speakers. Statements should relate to Charles County Board of Education agenda items or any education-related topic with the following limitations. Personnel matters, pending or potential appeals, or the comments regarding the actions or statements of individual staff or the private lives of any individual are not appropriate topics. Proper language and decorum are required at all times. This evening, we have two people signed up in person and one person virtually. Uh, the first speaker is Cannon Reynolds.
Oh, good evening, board members. I would like it to be known that I did not sign myself up. What does it say I'm discussing? It says a song. Well, I guess I'm singing you guys a song. But before I do that, before I begin, I would like to say, just real quick, that I'm a student at North Point. I'm coming to you guys as a student real quick, and I just wanna say, I've involved myself in a lot of extracurriculars, especially when it comes to, like, the arts. So, I'm in choir, I'm in theater, I do a lot for the arts. And on the record, I just want to thank all of you guys, 'cause I've seen a lot of your faces at a lot of my shows and performances. Uh, I believe I saw Chairperson Lucas and Ms. Wilson at the All County Concert. So, thank you for that. It means a lot when you have a board of educators that support the arts in their school system. Um, furthermore, I have a concert on Thursday. So, if you guys are around North Point area and you wanna see some choir music, then feel free to come out. And I believe that we're coming here on Friday to sing again for you guys. I don't know if that's a surprise, but if it is a surprise...
It was. But don't worry about it. Nobody, nobody heard it. Now you do have to sing before your time is up.
Any requests?
Jingle bells.
I don't know how jingle bells goes.
Just give us a taste, though. It's all your talent.
Have yourself a merry little Christmas. All right, that's it.
Much more entertaining than most speakers. First speaker is Pascal Small. Pascal Small. That was our last speaker in person. Uh, we have one person signed up virtually.
Chairperson, because we have one person that signed up to speak virtually, and Ms. Jamela Ward, can unmute yourselves.
I'm sorry, what was the name?
Jamela Ward.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, hello?
Hello.
Hi, um, hi, board. Hello, everyone that's there. I wanted to, um, address something that my daughter is experiencing. She's at, um, she's in the first grade. And my husband and I are a bit concerned about the, uh, first grade math curriculum. They're using, um, we've come to learn that they're using a book by Kendall Hunt, and they learn their lessons in units. So, they, I don't know, I'm guessing that they might spend a month or two on a particular unit. unit. And they have a unit book. And the unit book that I have in front of me is, again, it's by Kendall Hunt, and this is the curriculum. And she, first graders, my daughter, is only six years old. She's, again, just coming out of kindergarten, and this is, I guess, her first year in a more advanced class outside of, like, daycare to kindergarten. It's a little bit more of a progression, which is okay. But the problem that I have with the curriculum is, in this curriculum, they're doing word problems. And they are advancing pretty quickly in the type of word problems that they're doing. I would say, over a month or two, they moved from adding in a word problem two numbers to then having to read the word problem and deduce from the word problem, now that they have to add a number with a number that's missing to find the total. Then the same thing with subtraction. Then they moved from subtracting two numbers that are given to them in the word problem, and then moving to giving them a number and the total in the word problem, and then they have to deduce the number that's missing. And this is all word problems for six-year-olds. And they, in my opinion, weren't prepared for it, because in kindergarten, when I thought back to this, my daughter was never given any math homework in kindergarten. She wasn't given any math homework so far in first grade. So, it's, what they're limited to learning is right in the classroom, and that's it. And it's like, how, why is the expectation that a six-year-old would know this? And then, on top of that, I see I have 24 seconds left. On top of that, some of the words in the problems are way beyond their level. Here's a problem, I'm going to read it to you. Mai has five graphic novels. She checks out four more. How many graphic novels does she have? And I don't understand why they would expect six-year-olds to know the words "graphic novel" and then be able to understand it and solve the problem. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairperson, Pascal Small has returned. Would you let her speak?
Sure.
Pascal Small.
Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak. I'll be brief, because I know that this board is transitioning. I'm not going to touch it. I know that we're going to have new leadership, and I welcome them here today as I see them. We're very excited to start working with you as soon as you are sworn in. Let me take a breath. So, the times that we have come up to speak on the longstanding issues within CCPS, we know that there's a long road ahead of us. We know that we're going to have to partner with the system to be able to fix those issues that are deeply rooted in our school system. I just want to make sure you all understand the burden you're putting on families, to have to come, to show up, to come up with solutions, to be the ones to solve the issues that you are all upholding in ways that either are unconscious or conscious. So, understand that today, I could have been home with my daughter, helping her with her reading, helping her with her homework. I have three kids in CCPS. And instead, I'm here, out of breath, trying to find my words, trying to plead to you all, to stop putting the burden on families to fix these issues. Really take them seriously. Reach out to our communities. Come in conversation with us. Look at to the person that's actually speaking to you today. I see three people, thank you, with their heads up. Four, etaj. But this is the problem that we're talking about. Like, when we come, we're disrespected. When we come with solutions, we're told to go. When we're coming to you with all the issues, we see some improvement, and then it just goes back to normal. Today, we are very aware that there are Title IX violations. There are 504 and IEP non-compliances. We understand that, we know it, we see it, you all know it, and we're going about business as usual. You have children that are not getting the speech therapies they need, they're not getting the proper early interventions when it comes to reading that they need. You are having learning environments that are showing that are unsafe to our students because racism, discrimination against transgender students, students of color, and discrimination of religion are happening in so many of our schools. The amount of stories that I've had to hear this past two weeks from families is heartbreaking. And I don't understand if you all see that or know that, or maybe if we just don't care. But understand that we're going to try to come as many times as possible to advocate for our children, but you're really putting a burden on families, and that needs to stop. And I plead to the new board to please don't continue that cycle, because I didn't have to be here today. I shouldn't have to be here today. I shouldn't have to go and do meetings at Panera. I shouldn't have to go and teach parents what you're supposed to be teaching them. I had parents asking me what these titles even mean. So, do a little bit better by your families. Thank you for your service.
Mr. Schwartz, thank you. Okay, next, we're going to move on to action items. We have some minutes to approve. This time, Chair will look for a motion to approve the executive session minutes of 15 November.
Motion seconded.
Moved by Ms. Wilson and seconded by Ms. Abel. All those in favor, please raise your hand. It's unanimous, with the exception of Ms. Brown, who had to step out. Next, the board will look for a motion on the minutes from the board meeting of November 15th, the regular board meeting.
So moved.
It's moved by Ms. Abel and seconded by Mr. Hancock. Is there any discussion? No discussion. All those in favor, please raise your hand. It's unanimous for all those present. Board will look for a motion from the minutes from the legislative session of November 28th.
So moved. Second.
Moved by Ms. McGraw and seconded by Ms. Abel. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please raise your hand. It's unanimous for all those present. Next are the minutes of the same day, November 28th, of the student town hall.
So moved. Second.
Moved by Ms. Abel and seconded by Mrs. McGraw. Any discussion on those?
Discussion?
Yes.
The minutes list, who attended the time, but there isn't a description of the highlights of the meetings. And I fortunately heard the student board member mention the fact that it was YouTube'd and that members of the community or the student body could recover it. But if you look at the minutes, there isn't any written minutes. So, that's a comment that...
Right.
There's no body to it. You know, any written documentation, I think, is helpful, because so often, we put out information and we're having to put out information again. And we can, and there was very useful information referenced of bringing your own device, that I thought Charmaine did an excellent job of the reasons. And so, that documentation is something that, hey, the student, the student members can always reference the minutes of, hey, I forgot what the four reasons were or what the three reasons were. So, just a comment, something to consider in the future.
That's a good point. Yeah, I mean, so in the past, this is the way, I mean, I hear what you're saying. We could, we can make reference to the fact that there, that there is, that there is a, that there is a video, so, that they can watch.
I'd like to amend the motion to include the YouTube video link.
Is there a second?
That needs a second.
Moved and seconded.
Ms. Battleakart has had her hand up.
So, Ms. Battleakart?
Thank you. I just wanted to add, for those that aren't parents, it did get sent out through Parent View as well, the video itself. So, there is another avenue that they did receive it if it's not in there. So, I just wanted to share that as well.
Okay, so there is a motion and a second to add the link to the YouTube video, which documents the whole meeting. Any more discussion? So, can we vote on the amendment, please? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Thank you. All right, and so with the addition of that, I'd need to vote on the approval of the minutes as a whole. All those in favor, please raise your hand. That's unanimous. Thank you. Okay, and finally, the minutes from the board work session of November 28th. So moved.
Second.
It's moved by Mr. Hancock and seconded by Ms. Wilson. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please raise your hand. Thank you. Next is personnel.
Motion to accept. Second.
Motion made by Ms. Abel, seconded by Ms. McGraw. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Thank you, it's unanimous from those present. Next is board policy, 3910. That was the change, one change regarding notification from the superintendent when entering on the board's behalf.
Motion to approve. Second.
Made by Ms. Abel, seconded by Ms. Wilson. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please raise your hand. Thank you, it's unanimous. Next.
Are you going back to the calendar and to the other policies?
I'm doing the calendar now. Yeah. That's okay. So, school calendar, the 2023-2024 calendar. So, in our last meeting, we were presented with two options of the board calendar. Option one had built-in weather days, which was explained by Ms. Mackey. And option two is the traditional calendar that we've used.
Motion to approve option two, the traditional calendar. Second.
It's made by Ms. Abel and seconded by Ms. McGraw. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please raise your hand. That is unanimous, including student board member. Thank you. Finally, there, the last is amendments to various policies, 9120, 9333, 9335, and 9340. Let's start with, Mr. Schwartz, can we approve those as a group?
Yes.
Okay.
Motion to approve the amendments as presented. Second.
Made by Ms. Abel and seconded by Ms. Wilson. And just as a reminder to everyone, to public, that just really changes language, since the board is increasing in members, changing language to, that shows that we need a greater number of votes from board members for certain items. Okay, if there's no discussion, all those in favor, please raise your hand. And that is...
May I have a vote on that?
I believe the student board member votes on that, yeah. So, that is unanimous, along with the student board member. Awesome. So, with that, that was the last item on our agenda. The board will look for a motion to adjourn.
And with that, as Ed Murrow used to say, "Good night and good luck." I motion to adjourn. Second.
It's made by Ms. Abel and seconded by Ms. McGraw. Just like to say, it's been a privilege and a pleasure. Thank you very much. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Times two. Thank you very much, everybody. Have a nice evening.
Happy days are here again.